This time I'll call to order the June seventeen, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency. This time move to item two on the agenda, two point one, approve the minutes of the April fifteen CRA meeting as submitted.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. This time we move to item three on the agenda, citizens to be heard regarding items not on the agenda. Are there any citizens to be heard today? Seeing none, we'll move to item four point one on the agenda.
Good afternoon, board members or trustees. Jesus Nino, CRA Executive Director. Just for the record, I didn't want to read the first item even though it's already been approved. That was item number two point one, ID number twenty-four dash zero-two-four-four, approval of the minutes of the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four CRA meeting as submitted and written submission by the city clerk. That's just for the record. This next item is item number four point one, ID number twenty-four dash zero-six-nine-one, approval of the twenty-twenty-three financial statements. And we have, we have the finance, there they are, I'm sorry.
You gonna let them take it away?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Monica Mitchell, Assistant Finance Director. This item is for the presentation of the Community Redevelopment Agency's audit for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In twenty nineteen, a new statute was passed requiring standalone separately audited financial statements for CRAs, so we've been preparing separate financial statements for the CRA since fiscal year twenty twenty. This audit does not include any activity relative to the North Greenwood CRA as that fund was established with activity in the current fiscal year. The CRA fund has always been included in the city's audited financial statements. As a non-major fund, the CRA fund is only required by governmental auditing standards to be audited in the aggregate with other non-major funds. However, our city charter requires all funds to be audited individually, so we were already satisfying part of the statute's intention. The statute also requires additional testing for compliance with the Community Redevelopment Act found in Florida statutes, chapter one sixty-three. Those procedures would not have previously been included in the city's audit. To present the CRA audit, I would like to introduce John Brielmeier with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, the city's external auditors.
Good afternoon. As Monica said, I'm John Brielmeier with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. We performed the external audit for the CRA as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to thank Monica and Jay for their support in getting the audit to completion. There's a number of hours it takes to get through these statements. These statements are prepared by the city. We then perform our financial statement audit over them. If you look at the statements, they're about thirty-eight pages, they're not very long. The bulk of it, for what I would recommend any reader, is the MDA, so the first twelve pages of the financial statements. It really takes everything that the financial statements have and puts it into layman's terms and tells you about the activity during the year. So as part of our audit, we issue several reports and letters, the first one being the Independent Auditor's Report. We issued an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion, it's the highest level of assurance we're able to provide. The next one is the Government Auditing Standards Report. If there is any instances of non-compliance, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies, it'd be reported in this document. I'm happy to report there are none. And then the management letter is the letter prescribed by the Auditor General of the state of Florida. We had no findings to communicate in that document as well. The last two is the Local Government Investment Policies Report. The CRA participates in the city's investment pool. The city's investment pool is in accordance with Florida statute, and there's no significant issues noted. We also report on the compliance with the Redevelopment Trust Fund. Again, no issues noted. Just some other communications for you. Your financial statements are prepared using estimates. Those estimates include the allowance for doubtful accounts, the fair value of investments. Significant accounting policies can be found in note one of the financial statements. We are not aware of any significant difficulties with management, disagreements with management, or other issues and findings to note. Any questions for me?
Questions from the council? Do you want to hear from the public wish to speak to this agenda item? Thank you. Hearing none, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, agenda item four point one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. This time we move to item four point two.
Again, Jesus Nino, Executive Director for CRA. Item four point two is ID number twenty-four dash zero-six-nine-zero, Presentation of Arts Oasis Mural Fest twenty twenty-four. I do want to introduce Ms. Amber Bryce from the Arts and Culture Division to come and give her presentation.
Amber Bryce, Arts and Cultural Affairs Manager. At the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four CRA meeting, the trustees voted to approve funding for a mural festival to take place in the downtown and east gateway neighborhoods. Our goal is to have nine murals in total painted on local businesses. In the end, we ended up with six, which for our first mural festival, we're still pretty happy with. I wanted to share with you those murals today. Here's a list of the participating businesses, and we'll go through each mural. First mural is titled Familia, or Family, and it was painted by Tampa Bay artist Frank E. G. This mural is located on the west side of the building of Ranchito de Pepe on Cleveland Street. There is a nod to our new sister city in this mural as well. The license plate on the car at the bottom is actually a license plate from Hidago, Mexico, which is where our sister city, Iximiljuan, is located. This artist, myself, and the owner of Senor Bubbles were interviewed and featured on a Bay News nine story covering the mural festival, which I'll talk about later. The next mural is located on the same building but on the east wall, it's on a different business called Senor Bubbles. It's also located on Cleveland Street. This mural is titled The Adventures of Senor Bubbles and was painted by Titusville artist Naomi Haberland. The next mural is the only business that participated that was not located in the east gateway. The property is Clear Track Studios, which is located on Cleveland Street in downtown. The mural is titled Prismatic Rush, and the artist is Cecilia Luisa, who is based out of Saint Petersburg. The next participating business is the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, which is located on Gulf to Bay. This was painted by Saint Petersburg artist, who goes by the name of Zulu Painter. The mural is titled Joy of Flight Through Music, and the artist hid a little Easter egg in this mural with the music notes being the first couple of chords to Fly Like an Eagle by the Steve Miller Band, which is of course a nod to the Fraternal Order of the Eagles. The next business is Senor Subs and Euros, also located on Cleveland Street. This mural is located on the west wall where their to-go window is located, so this mural gets a lot of foot traffic. It is titled Reverie Marshes and was painted by Miami-based artist Ray Ramirez. The last mural is located on the east wall of Charlie Sushi and Japanese Restaurant, which is also located on Cleveland Street. This mural is titled Waltz in Orange and Blue and was painted by an artist out of Sunrise, Florida, who goes by the name Evoca One. I wanted to share with you all some of the success we had on social media around this mural festival. We had an amazing reach, and all of the feedback was extremely positive. We did three Facebook posts in total, with the first one receiving three hundred and fifty-nine likes and fifty-nine shares. The second one received a hundred and one likes and twenty-eight shares, and the third post received a hundred and fifty-seven likes and forty-five shares. You can see here, a visit Saint Pete Clearwater shared our post, as did all of the artists, which resulted in even more attention for our city. As I said before, we were featured on Bay News Nine, as you can see at the bottom here, with Josh Rojas. So there's a lot of community support for these type of projects. Lastly, I wanted to share an email we received from one of the business owners about the mural on their building. This is from Mike Johnson, who's the owner of Clear Track Studios, who had the Prismatic Rush mural. And he said, "We wanted to tell you how incredibly grateful we are to have such a beautiful mural on our wall. For fifteen years, I've been in this building, and went from being embarrassed about our exterior to so proud to show the world the beauty that is that mural that Cecilia painted. My clients love it, and I hear talk about future music videos being recorded in front of it. My family and I often walk outside and walk around the building just to look at it. My three-year-old son loves the colors and shouts them out as we walk past. It brings so much joy, even to people walking or slowly driving past it." Thanks again, Mike Johnson. I think this is just such a moving letter. It's a wonderful tribute to what art can do. Of course, it takes immense talent to paint these works of art, but it's also a testament to which something so simple like paint can do for a business or a community. We also have the link to the Bay News nine story if anybody wants to see it, it's attached, but we won't play it here for the sake of time. But I wanted to say thank you to the trustees for your support on this project. We look forward to hosting another mural festival next year. Thank you. My bill will bring any questions.
Questions. Vice Mayor?
Another question, I just wanted to say that these are great murals, and I'm impressed with the diversity of the different businesses that put them up. Most people don't know, we have a recording studio, a really good recording studio in downtown Clearwater, and it kind of, they don't have a big sign, and nobody would really know it's there, this really is gonna set it off, so it's, that's, I'm really excited about this. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tucher?
I've also received a lot of positive feedback from all these murals. Specifically, one of the resounding messages is that they really appreciated the addition of the new genres to add to our nature-inspired previous collection. I like even the way the locations were specifically chosen to reflect the surroundings, so thank you so much. This is a great addition to our downtown. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. This time we move to item four point three on the agenda.
Great job, Amber. Item four point three is ID number twenty-four dash zero-six-nine-two, approve the Community Redevelopment Agency, or CRA, Business Spotlight Program that will provide exposure to businesses within the downtown Clearwater CRA and authorize appropriate officials to execute the same. Before I bring Ms. Julia Baltos up here, I just want to let you know that staff has heard, the trustees, administration, the media, and so forth, as far as us being out there and promoting our small businesses that are existing in the downtown CRA. So our staff is literally intensifying their activation as far as outreach to those business owners, and this is just one of many programs that are to come as far as us going out to the businesses. Ms. Vicki here, she's extremely aggressive in going out to the businesses, introducing herself, letting them know what businesses we have in place. Then Mary Rector, you really, really impressed me on your intensity of constantly marketing our businesses and organizations in Clearwater. So I let staff know, we can't let the mayor outdo us as far as promoting Clearwater. So next up, I'm gonna bring up Julia Baltos to give a short presentation on one of the initiatives that we're moving forward.
Hi, good afternoon, Julia Baltos, CRA Specialist. The item I have before you is the Downtown Clearwater Business Spotlight Program. The Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, recommends approving the CRA Business Spotlight Program to support its goals of attracting residents, visitors, businesses, and employees to downtown. Over six months, CRA staff has engaged with business owners and community stakeholders to develop partnerships that foster meaningful connections within the community. The purpose of this Community Redevelopment Agency Business Spotlight Program is to promote local businesses within the community. It provides exposure and support to these businesses, helping them thrive and contribute to the economic growth and vitality of the area. The program involves showcasing different businesses through marketing efforts and other initiatives to attract customers and increase awareness of the products and services offered by local establishments. It will foster a sense of community pride and engagement by highlighting the unique offerings of the businesses in the community, or in the area. The Business Spotlight Program directly promotes goals and objectives of the twenty-eighteen Clearwater Downtown Redevelopment Plan, specifically people's goals. Downtown shall be a place that attracts residents, visitors, businesses, and their employees, and enable the development of the community. The city shall encourage a vibrant and active public realm, recreation and entertainment opportunities, and support the community and neighborhoods. Objective one D, encourage a variety of office-intensive businesses, including finance and insurance, IT software, professional services, data management, analytics and services, and medical to relocate and expand in downtown to provide a stable employment center. This program is intended for local business owners who meet specific criteria, including location within designated downtown Clearwater redevelopment boundaries, legal compliance, active operational status, and a commitment to community involvement. Eligible businesses surrounding various sectors, including retail and restaurant businesses, personal service industries, galleries, theaters, and other cultural and community gathering Upon approval, the Business Spotlight Program will follow marketing and communications plan. The application window will be open for four weeks to allow businesses to submit their applications. Once the application window has closed, committee members will carefully review and assess all received applications. Upon completion of the review process, approved businesses will be notified, and meetings will be scheduled to discuss timelines, expectations, and other pertinent details. At a future CRA meeting, a presentation of the final recipients of the Business Spotlight Program will be recognized. The proposed program meets the goals of the Downtown Redevelopment Plan and provides a partnership opportunity for business owners who wish to establish a sense of community within our redevelopment area. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Menino?
I'm just interested in what, if they meet specific criteria, just so when we're talking to businesses in the community, what are specific criteria that we're looking for to qualify for this program?
We want to make sure that we're spotlighting businesses who do not have any code and enforcement lean, so on a positive realm, if they do have that, we want to be able to partner or be able to, I'm sorry.
I can answer. As far as the program is, if they do have any type of violations, major violations or minor violations, they might not qualify for this particular program, but at least it is an opportunity for us to figure out who does have issues, and if we can potentially partner with some of our existing grants to mitigate those issues, and then maybe they do qualify at a later date. And this program in no way also prevents us from constantly promoting our existing businesses. For instance, Emily's, we're gonna start putting them on our social media just every once in a while, same thing with other businesses. This is just a more robust type of spotlight program. It's mostly the major code issues, maybe health violations, or whatever it may be.
Vice Mayor?
So with that said, you're actually helping them, like getting permits and that kind of thing?
No, the program is to spotlight the businesses. Basically, it's an extra arm for us to help them market their business to the world. It's no real monetary incentives to them or anything like that, but it is when we are engaging those businesses, if we do see that they might need help, it is an opportunity for us to get our foot in the door and say, you know what, we potentially have a grant that'll help you improve the entrance to your business here. So it's just a way for us to engage, spotlight them, and maybe see if we can help them any further. Anna wants to add anything she can.
Ann Lopez, Senior CRA Manager. To answer your question, we will be working on creating an application, and with that application, we'll actually have a review committee, so it'll be members within the CRA and different departments. We, hopefully, will have someone from Public Communications and maybe Neighborhood Services to be able to sit down and just kind of review the applications that we submit. So what we're looking, what we're looking for, we want to be able to spotlight every business, but we're really looking for those that have a very major impact within the community. So at some point, everyone will be spotlighted, but this is, to kind of start off the pilot program, it's more being able to spotlight those businesses that have a large impact within our downtown area.
Other questions from the council? Does anyone here from the public desire to speak with regard to item four point three?
Mike Mastrosario. I question, it's, I think it's a great idea that you're spotlighting them, but if I'm a recipient, a potential recipient, how are you spotlighting me? How much dollars does that mean? Are you doing it through social media? Are you doing it through print? Are you doing it through, what vehicles are you using to spotlight these businesses? How much money are we spending on that? And what's our, when is this gonna take place? I heard a lot of open, unopened answers. Is that what the right word is? Thank you.
Can I respond if you wish?
Anyone respond to that?
What I challenge staff to do is that, once this came up, if we got to go ahead, is to get this on the street within thirty days. There is no us giving anyone monetary incentives for this. This is more of us just putting it on our social media, also spreading it to the city's social media, and if we do, if they do have any flyers, kind of spreading it out there. Orlando does this very well. At any program that we do create, one of the things that I do challenge staff to also do is when we create programs, grants, whatever it may be, to also have a communications engagement plan attached to that so we can market our programs to the world, because otherwise they're useless if no one knows anything about them. So they're putting that together quickly, and this will be on the street by, basically, hopefully by the end of this month. Orlando does it well, other cities do it well as far as how they spotlight their small businesses within their boundaries, and it's mostly us just building our outreach with our social media. And this particular program, we would also give them the opportunity to come before the trustees, so we can get that, those viewers to also see who they are. And it's just one more vehicle for us to spotlight them.
So there's no financial support for these businesses?
Not present.
You're getting our approval to dedicate staff resources?
Yes. Yes. Correct.
Anyone else here from the public desire to speak to agenda item four point three? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, agenda item four point three. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. This time we move to item four point four on the agenda.
Item four point four is ID number twenty-four dash zero-six-eight-nine, Provide Direction on Cleveland Street Shipping Container/Mobile Vendors. I'm gonna bring up the presentation here. Thank you, Ms. Lopez. So this is an item that was brought up by Councilwoman Tucher before my time as far as trying to see how we can activate the downtown with shipping containers at that time. This presentation before you is staff's research as far as to see what we can do as far as mobile vendors in the downtown. The presentation is called the Cleveland Street Vending, Mobile Vending Update, and we also have some recommendations at the end, and then we'll also request a motion. So the goal of this is to create opportunities for new commercial activity on Cleveland Street, but not within the traditional building storefronts. This is more in the public realm area, and the parking spaces and the turn lanes of the closed, the closed portions of Cleveland Street and the four-hundred, five-hundred So as far as the contents for this presentation, we do have the targeted area, which is the downtown, the types of businesses that are eligible. Then we have three potential options that we're gonna be presenting to you, then a staff recommendation on which options that we're recommending when we move forward on the next steps. So the target area, as you see there, that's the boundaries for the downtown community redevelopment area, and also the boundaries for the downtown development board. And you see the star there, that actual target area is the four-hundred and five-hundred blocks of Cleveland Street. So in the past, whenever the Planning Division came and gave a presentation before the trustees or the council, that presentation was on shipping containers. Since then, staff has met again with them to discuss the viability of shipping containers and also other mobile vending options, and basically the same status was given to the CRA staff. We also met with Public Works, we met with Economic Development staff, and at the end of the day, shipping containers are basically not allowed by the city's rules and regulations. So what is allowed, if they follow all the rules and regulations, get all the permits and so forth, is other types of mobile vending. So as I said before, we have three options that we're gonna present to you. This first option is option number one, which is dedicated commercial activity. This is for the four-hundred block of Cleveland Street, the closed-off portions. And was this, was this particular, was this particular, let me read the keys here before I move forward, before, make sure you understand what the keys here, on the bottom here, on the lower right portion of the presentation, we have the street key. Then we also have the first floor building key. So as you see, the purple area So as you see, the purple areas there, that's for dedicated commercial activity areas that I'll present in a second. Then the orange, that's for the parklet areas. Then the red portion is for sidewalk café area. The little red dot is where the art sculpture is at. But for the first floor, we have the green lines there on the top portion and the bottom portion of the presentations. The green line means for the occupied spaces. The blue is where the institutional space is at. Then we have the purplish color, that's vacant space, then the yellow is under construction. So as far as for option one, this provides an opportunity for new commercial activity within that, within the turn lanes and also within the parking spaces. This is currently empty and unused space that could potentially accommodate two vendors at the Fort Harrison area, as you see there on the map, and also on the Osceola portion of the block. This could create up to three new business locations. This would be for basically airstreams and so forth, and you'll see in the next slide. So as far as the commercial area, the commercial activities for those areas, especially the purple areas, we're recommending airstreams or food trucks or other types of mobile vending, with the understanding that whenever we do review these mobile vehicles here, that they would have to mitigate sound. For instance, if they have generators, they're going to have to mitigate some of that sound. In addition, they can't be trashy looking. They have to be neat, presentable, and have a good reputation as far as with their health inspections and so forth. In addition to that, as I described on the map, we're also proposing for this option number one is parklets. So you see the parklets here in the presentation here. You see in some of the slides here, there's no shade, but the parklets that we do propose, they're going to have to provide shade areas for the community that wants to use those parklet areas for their dining and so forth. And we'll also work very closely with PD. This presentation was also presented to a few stakeholders out in downtown to kind of get their feedback as well before we brought it to you, and one of the issues that came up is the potential for homeless to come and use some of these activated public areas. So staff has been charged to work with PD, so we can mitigate some of those issues that will come up in the future. Now I'm up to option number two. This is for the 400 and 500 blocks. This is for event activity. Mobile vendors could utilize these spaces, these areas for special events such as food trucks or other types of vending similar to Market Marie. The special event vendors could operate out of the unused parking spaces or other open areas and the turn lanes and so forth, obviously working very closely with Public Works, planning and so forth to make sure things are done correctly. And these are just examples. There could be other mobile-type vending activity out there. And this could accommodate actually up to 23 food trucks. See, see there in the blue? All those little blue squares, those are food trucks. Of course, this is a very high-intense 23, so we wouldn't expect it to be 23 actual food trucks out there, it'd be less potentially in other activity. And the third option, and this is the option that staff is actually recommending, is a hybrid of those two options with special events and also the airstreams and food trucks and so forth. So it's a combination of all of them, basically for the 400 and 500 blocks, and we would be working very closely with Parks and Rec, other departments, to make sure things are done the right way. So these are the recommendations that staff has, and this will be all hands on deck as far as departments to make sure things are done right. And we're also recommending that we actually go out for an RFP, so that we can get a professional that knows how to market and put these together. And this could be on a monthly basis, it could even be bi-monthly, or it can be on a seasonal basis, but we do want to activate the downtown. This has been done in other communities. Tampa does it, Bradenton does it, Orlando does it, and the closed-off portion of their streets, it's just activated, and they usually have a professional just marketing and marketing and constantly getting these vendors down and just having the areas activated. We can do block parties with Parks and Rec and Neighborhood Services, and there could be kid activities. There could be many, many types of activities in the downtown, and this would also be in combination with other initiatives that we want to bring forward, for instance, in the later future. Near future, we want to bring you a lighting plan that we want to do for the downtown that's more decorative and aesthetic and attracts more individuals to the downtown. With that, staff is recommending your approval to move forward with option number three, which is the hybrid of those two options, the event and the mobile vendors, and any other recommendations you may have. We're open for questions.
Councilmember Tashera?
First of all, I thank you for the presentation. There are so many aspects that I like. The options that you provided, the airstreams, as well as the combination of having parklets to support those vendors, that's great. The turning lanes as a location, that's awesome. I do have a question, though. When you say event commercial activity, are we talking about monthly, weekly? I mean, how active can this be?
What we're proposing is if we do get these mobile vendors out there, they'll be semi-permanent as long as the street stays closed. Now, obviously, if the economics doesn't work for those airstreams or whatever it may be, and they pack up and leave, that's a different story, but we're hoping these will be semi-permanent, basically there at least three times a week or whatever works for them, or just be there more on a permanent basis, and we'll make sure we work very closely with the businesses in the downtown. Like I said before, we did sit down with two of the stakeholders out there with Clear Sky and so forth to kind of get their feedback on what we're presenting here, and we didn't really see any major issues except for the potential homeless, and they do like that we're doing something to activate that area in the weekends and during the week, during the night economy time. And it just, after 5:00, what we've heard is things shut down and they don't get too much business.
So the semi-permanent are the blue blocks?
Yes.
For the 400 and 500. So in preparation for this discussion, I took a little stroll last night, and I did a rudimentary inventory, so that I can highlight my points, I'm sorry. And I counted the 4, 5, and the 600 block, and I divided them up into institutional, non-commercial, unavailable, construction, and challenged. The institutional, and this is my definition, is not at all, you know, official. It's not open to the general public, no goods or services provided. Non-commercials may have public access but no goods or services. Unavailable cannot be leased or occupied, no leases being offered. Construction is long-term renovations, space is blocked off for more than two years, and challenged is more than 10 years or significantly above market rates. So those is how I divided. So in the three blocks, there are roughly 60 total available ground-level spaces. And when I say roughly, it's because some spaces have been further divided and some are not, so it's roughly 60. So out of 60 available potential spaces, we only have 22 occupied. That's dismal. Then when you remove the institutional, as well as the non-commercial, we're down to 13. 13 spaces. And out of the 26 that are not occupied, they're almost all unavailable. So when I look at these numbers, to me, it's very clear what the challenges are, right? The challenges are lack of volume. We simply do not have enough businesses to sustain a successful downtown. Lack of diversity, this is very important. Every other downtown has something to do other than to eat so that you can keep the traffic going over. So it needs a diverse retail component to maintain the high traffic, to keep the feet there. Perception, downtown's lack of businesses feeds a negative perception of downtown. Lack of control over private property. Property owner or owners have held steadfast in their resistance to activate their property, which means our hands are tied in some ways. So that makes it that much more important that the properties we do control, which is the turning lanes and the parking spots, those are ours, we can control that. And then the visual blight. There is a significant negative impact to visibly empty and blighted buildings. So although I like everything that I'm seeing, I'm a little bit concerned that it's not enough. I'm concerned that this is like throwing a pebble on it in the ocean and thinking that there's a ripple effect. When you say event commercial activity, that's the one that I'm concerned about, because I don't want this to be a monthly thing. In order to make this an impact, I think it needs to be, we go and we go big, even if we limit the timeframe and make it like a three-to-six-month pilot, but I do want full commitment, because the challenges, as I've stated, are unique and quite challenging, and so it's going to need a big effort. So I support this plan, but I don't want to have measures. I want those, first of all, I don't want only food trucks. That can't be sustainable. When I go to Market Marie, the most populated ones are the little minivan with sunglasses, the vintage refurbished horse trailer. We have to have retail as well. So if someone goes to downtown, they can eat, shop, have ice cream, and then a drink. So you maintain that presence there. So those are my two cents.
And if I may respond. Great points, and when I brought up the example of Bradenton, their main street is open, but they do close it down for events, basically, and they do have multiple tents and so forth, like Market Marie, with different types of commercial activity, retail, kid stuff, you name it. That's what we meant, was the commercial activity in option number three, to have not just food trucks, that was just an example.
Vice Mayor?
I appreciate your input on this. Couple of things that I wanted to say, and you mentioned it already, that you were going to get with a lot of the restaurants down there and get their opinion of what would be the best to help their business. One of the things, we used to have a market down here years ago, kind of like the Market Marie, but right on Cleveland Street, and we'd block it off for that. And my problem with that was, it brought a lot of people down, but they were putting food vendors in front of restaurants, which I said, you can't do that. You know, you got to space them out. So a couple of recommendations would be, that's a great plan, is to go to the restaurants itself, see, I mean, whatever list you have, clear it with them, and then when you do this, make a big rollout on this where everybody knows it's coming to come down and take a look at it, instead of just doing it. I mean, make it a marketed thing that, you know, here's what we're doing, and I think it would get people down here to really kick it off. You know, restaurants as well as merchandise is good, but I think you've got to be careful on the merchandise, not to do it too hokey, you know? You get something that people would like to come down to see, and I've seen some examples that other cities have done, and they've done a more classy job than a parklet kind of job, you know, where they have glass, mobile units that people can go in and so forth. So I like it, so I just want to make sure it's done right. Thanks.
There is a city, I think it might be Orlando, and I went to visit, and they do, all the tables, all the booths have to be uniform, and it looks very, they can be different colors, but uniform and very neat, so, yes.
Councilmember Menino?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for staff putting the time. For me, option three does make the most sense. I thank you, Ms. Tashera, for, you know, this report and for taking your stroll and giving us all your homework. My thoughts are, is that we're skipping some steps, and I feel like this is a Band-Aid to a downtown challenge. In my view, as a city, there's, in our downtown district that we're discussing, there's three institutions, City of Clearwater, the county, and the church, right? And those are the three. What I think that we're missing is some sort of agreed-upon partnership of creating some pathway or vision, a master plan, say it, for years to come for this city to be successful. Although great options, I feel like there's steps to get to this point that we're kind of skipping, and I understand why, I think we all understand why. I just hope that as a staff and as a board, at some point, we can find a way to be comfortable in having these conversations on how to best help our downtown district not only survive but thrive. And I hope that at some point, as a dius, we find that comfort in having these discussions and creating, if it is a true partnership of what all three of our institutions want, we all have publicly stated that this is a direction we want to go on a vibrant, thriving downtown. I hope that we find a way to come together as three institutions to create that pathway and that partnership, bring our citizens along with us that are begging for this solution for many years, and to truly make downtown successful. And if we get to a place where any of those institutions are not on the same understanding or same page as our direction, then I think we go in that pathway and direction of as a city. We do those things. I think this is a great idea, but again, I think we're skipping some steps, and I would like to see us continue some of those earlier steps on, do we have a downtown partnership? What does it look like? And how do we continue to move forward with the visioning, not just for the next couple months and for events, but for the next 20 years for our downtown?
One of the steps that I think is being missed with Clearwater, is that every community redevelopment agency in the state of Florida, for all their community redevelopment areas, by statute, they have to have a community redevelopment area plan. And we have a plan in place, now if that plan's not making sense, we need to relook at it and redo it. But my mantra to staff is, we have plans for North Greenwood, for downtown, we have to work those plans. If those plans aren't working, then we need to say so. These plans aren't working, figure out why they're not working. Is it our side, or is it just because it's not a good plan? But those plans also need to be strategic action plans for the next three to five years and you relook at it. I think the last time our downtown plan was looked at or approved was 2018. I'm thinking, I'm not particularly sure, but we'll look at that, and if the time has come for us to relook at that plan, to get a better plan on how we move forward, then we'll do that. But everything we're bringing to you here is in the plan. We're working that plan, but I completely agree with you on the bigger macro level. This is a small bullet point, but it is helping us inch forward.
Can I respond?
Understood.
Can I respond to, Councilman Menino? I agree with you. Unfortunately, I think it's time to not wait for the perfect solution. Those steps should be first, but they just simply are not feasible at this moment, and I don't want to wait anymore. And you're right, it's a Band-Aid, right? We're using mobile vendors to solve a problem that we have been unable to overcome. But I just want to bring back something. Mayor Hibbert, right after COVID hit, swiftly and courageously shut down the streets. It was the first downtown in Penaltz County to have it done. He responded to the environment, right? And it was, at that point, temporary, but I truly believe with 100% of my soul that every business would not have survived if he had not done that. No business can survive with 20% occupancy. And our downtown became the only one so that we had the people and no other downtown had. And it's that kind of risk-taking and innovativeness that we need right now. It is not the perfect solution, of course, because it's not the regular downtown. We have a very unique situation, and I think it's time that we take the risk and think outside the box, because the normal avenues that most other downtowns have, we don't. We have 26 properties that are not able to lease out. We can talk, we can negotiate, I would love to do that, but it's not happening, and downtown deserves actions now. And I think that it deserves something creative. So I agree with you. Unfortunately, I don't think we have the choice to do that yet.
Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, thank you, staff, for what you've presented. I also like hybrid option three here. Thank you, Councilmember Tashera, for these numbers as well. I share the same sentiment as majority of the people up here. I agree with the Band-Aid statement. However, I can see this being positive as long as we are having collaboration with the restaurants and trying to get more merchandise vendors, and then in hopes, in the future, maybe moving into one of these empty storefronts, right? So that's where the Band-Aid could transition into that overall long-range goal, because I think I 100% agree with Councilmember Menino, we need to be thinking not just for eight to 10 years, but, you know, what is our downtown going to be in 50 years? Where do we need it to be to have that vibrance, the vitality, and just to be flourishing all around? So I do like the start to this. I would echo the sentiments that have already been set up here, to not put food trucks in front of our restaurants. You know, we want people to be moving around the downtown. You know, we want people to be moving around the downtown, visiting the shops, visiting the restaurants that are in storefront already, and then continue just moving around, right? So I think this is great work. I look forward to seeing how we can transition, you know, from this in the future, and then hopefully getting our downtown packed and everybody coming down here, and then maybe moving away from this and keeping certain ones, because I do have a little apprehension to clutter, right? And maybe having too much, but, but again, in the mind of a Band-Aid looking to the future, I think this is probably a great option. So thank you.
Can I jump back? Go ahead. Yeah, I just wanted to follow. I just wanted to be clear for Mr. Sheriff. I am, in no way is my statement saying one or the other. I'm 100% in agreement with you. Solving our downtown challenges takes more than just creativity, it takes forward thinking, and I think this plan checks those boxes, so option three, I am in supportive. I do also believe in the talent within our city as far as our staff and sitting on this dais, and I believe that together we have that ability to have those further discussions that have been missing in our city for probably 40 years. And I think it's probably time that we find ways as a group to create that vision going forward and getting an answer of, are we on the same page, creating a vision for our future together, or are we not? But ignoring an issue or not talking about it is giving us the same answer for 40 years as if we got an answer. So I would just hope that we can be forward-thinking enough outside of just the short term and find conversations to solve our, our long-term challenges. And I look forward to us hopefully finding the comfort in having those discussions. Thank you.
Well, weigh in. I support this hybrid option. It's, to your point, to Councilmember Tishare's point, by itself, it's not going to move the needle. We've got, she pointed out, very nice information she put together. We've got bigger challenges than that. I, I will say that the 400 block, there have been times, I've been down there after an event at the Capitol Theater or something in the park at the Sound, where it's packed, and it's, it lends itself to the kind of recreational area, entertainment area that you're describing here that flourishes. The 500 block's been more challenging, because it's separated by Fort Harrison, and it's hard to get people to drift up that far. But I think these enhancements, at least for the 400 block, will help. And, you know, we need to support the successful businesses that are already in at 400 and 500 blocks. We've got three or four restaurants that have done very well for a while, so enhancing their area, I think, is good. We need to, I agree with the other councilmembers, the last thing we want to do is to disincentivize those successful restaurants by putting something in there that competes with them. That's, that would not be a good move, but, but that area has shown some promise. I would say, though, that, to Councilmember Tishare's chart here, that if we're trying to create the kind of walkable entertainment hangout space that they have in parts of Dunedin, Safety Harbor, I was in Tampa last Monday at Sparkman Wharf, you've got to do more than just put these trucks on the sidewalk to, to draw people. And, you know, we used to have Last Friday downtown. I think we got away from that during the pandemic, and I know we were trying to activate the park, but the reason a lot of people hang out in Dunedin is they've got more breweries than any other city in Pinellas County. They've got, they've got tremendous live music every weekend, even throughout the week. They draw artists from all over Tampa Bay and beyond, and so that's what they're known for, and that's what draws people to Dunedin. The fact that they have flourishing restaurants and all these businesses over there is just an aspect of why people are attracted there. Some, somewhat similar in Safety Harbor, and definitely, you know, Sparkman Wharf has all these, these freight, you know, but they complement the buildings, the bowling alleys and other things that are over there in that area that also draw folks over there. So I'm for this. We've got to do something, I agree with the other councilmembers, but we've got to do more than this. We've got to find, we've got to complement what is already succeeding there and, and order to make this really work. And so that's just what I would share with you.
City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor, if I will, I just also, I wanted to also remind council that we have a lot of things that are going on in conjunction with this plan, right? So this is one of many things that we're doing, to include having conversations or attempting to have conversations with our, the other people that are in the downtown, including the county with the county properties. We're in ongoing conversations in terms of that project, and to include reaching out to the church to have those conversations as well. So there are a lot of things that we are trying to do to have that total picture, not just a Band-Aid that will do that, and I hope in the, in the near future, we'll be able to have some updates in terms of how those conversations, in terms of the county plan is moving along, as well as if there's any possibility of a partnership with the church.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one comment, too. You were talking about entertainment, you know, and I think the DDB can also work with the CRA, and CRA, there's things the DDB can do that CRA can't do. One of them is subsidizing entertainment to bring people down. So I think if you work, luckily, we're the same people, so we could, we could come up with a pretty good plan, I think, you know, with the two agencies together to really kickstart things down there.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I was, I did not mention that the partnership for this initiative, not only the outside stakeholder partners, but internally is the DDB and the CRA, because you're absolutely right, there's many things that CRA cannot do and DDB can, special events and so forth, so this is expected to be a partnership between DDB and CRA.
Okay. Any further discussion? This is just to provide directions, I don't like to make public comments, so, okay? Senator Jim?
Before we move on, I'd just like to make clear, so there is consensus for option number three.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 5.1, Director's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, and I'll try to go through this as quickly as I can without jeopardizing the integrity of the material, this and these slides, because it did take a lot of staff time from staff members to put this together. So moving forward, we do want to have a presentation for you on the staff report, not as robust as this month, only because this is kind of the first one as far as having a presentation. So in the future, there'll be shorter slides. This is table of contents here. First up, as far as the presentation, we have basically department updates, and we'll have each of the area updates. So one of the things that we're doing internally right now is that we're redoing our webpage, basically to join the city on their big website, instead of having a separate webpage with the DDB and so forth. And this webpage, we're working with Granicus, and we're working with the city to have basically a one-stop shop for the community, where they can get all their information, make it consumer-friendly for the businesses, for the residents. If they're looking for a grant application, it's right there. If they're looking for contact information, it's right there. If they're looking for financials, everything is right there, easily found. Then in the future, also have metrics and key performance indicators on there as well, and just make it very easy for a lot of these public records requests, they don't, they won't have to be made anymore, because the information will be right there for them at the touch of their fingers. So we're working forward on this, moving forward on the website updates, hoping to have that up and running in September. Now, as far as the downtown, CRA, I won't go through every slide, since some of this information we already went through. For instance, the annual report, we've already completed that, and the Art Oasis, Ms. Amber has already presented on that particular item. As far as the Mercado, we do anticipate to have public art there once that project is complete. And the construction for the Mercado, if you've driven through that area, you see that construction is, is moving forward, is still on schedule from what I understand, and we do get quarterly updates, not quarterly updates, monthly updates as far as the status of that construction project, and so far still on schedule to be up and running as far as the end of this year. Now, other items that we're doing for the downtown is we're working with Public Works, planning, Mr. Delk, and outside agencies to see if we can put a trolley in the downtown, basically a looper taken from the gateway down to the downtown, connecting to whatever other trolleys go outside of the downtown. But this is, this is more of a destination-type trolley, and I know in Tampa, when we had our downtown, there's families that are low-income that literally go to the downtown just to get on the trolley, or to the parks and so forth, because that's, that's what they can afford. But this will also be, you know, a trolley just to take people around downtown, it's just, it's a destination in itself. And we'll bring you more information on this in the future, once we do have all the details kind of codified. And police, we do have interlocal agreement with PD, and PD, they're very aggressive in the downtown and going above and beyond with their customer service for the downtown businesses and residents and so forth. Statistics, these are the stats, we don't have to go through every single one, but they did provide me in the last few days updated stats that are, are not up here for May, so we'll make sure we get you those statistics. And what we can do, working with CM's office, is just distribute that information to you, and we don't have to really present it, but if you have questions on it in the future for crime stats, we can have a police officer up here to kind of answer some of those questions. As far as the archway, we did contribute increment funds for that affordable housing project in the Cleveland Street area, and this is going to be a catalytic project for the area. I have a lot of individuals that are going to be there to go to the restaurants and so forth locally. And this Thursday at 8:30 a.m., there is a groundbreaking, and hopefully all of you can attend. I'll be there in the background, and we'll see you there. Now, one of the things we do want to start highlighting, in addition to the business spotlight, is the new businesses that are coming to the downtown. So I have charged the staff to start keeping up what business tax receipts are being issued in the area, so we can know what's coming in, and we can go introduce ourselves and see how we can help them to be more successful, in addition to start attending the planning, planning and development monthly meetings, where individuals are just coming with concepts or coming with plans to be reviewed by the various city departments. So we'll be there monitoring that, and if we do see if someone is interested in starting a business in downtown, we'll get their contact information, approach them and see how we can help. But the businesses we do have up here, these are new businesses that are either up and running now or are about to be open. One is the Waffle Dream. Waffles Dream, it's on the gateway area, it's a small, a small business, small little restaurant. Our staff has visited them, and they've got good food, so we, hopefully you can go visit them. Then Los Amiches Bakery and Pizza, that is on Cleveland Street in April of 2024. Then Machi Boba and More on Missouri Avenue. These are all within the CRA boundaries. Then Olive and Time at 520 Cleveland Street. They have a soft opening, I think, what again? The end of this month, they're going to have a soft opening. So we'll bring these businesses up to you on a monthly basis. Then we do have, like, business renovation grants that we've approved out there in the downtown area. This particular one is for Glass Services, Eight Inc. Then another business renovation grant was approved for Nature's Food Patch for continuous improvement to their business. Then this is a list of the approved economic recovery grants that have been paid out or were paying out. Whenever we did the Cleveland Street updates, those businesses were facing hardships, so we had this business recovery grant that we issued out to them before my time, but we're still paying on them and closing them out. Then we also have an essential equipments micro grant. These are three businesses that we've recently helped, DeLuca's Restaurant, Charlie's Sushi and Japanese Restaurant, Robinson Hospitality. Then these are other approved business renovation grants, all during this fiscal year of individuals that we're helping. So you can see, we're doing a lot in downtown, so moving forward, we're trying to tell our story more, and I'm not a marketing expert, but some of our staff members are, and some of the city staff are experts, so we'll work with them closely. Any questions on the downtown before I move to North Greenwood?
Councilmember, to Chair?
Yes, the economic recovery grants, have all the businesses that were affected, have they all applied?
This particular grant, I'm not sure if they've all applied, but I know the grant's already expired. It's been expired for a few months now. We're just kind of working with the ones that are still executing their documents.
Because with these numbers, not even half has been spent, so I guess the money's being reallocated, right?
Do you have answers for that, Ms. Anne?
I'm sure she does. She's worked closely with them.
Yeah, $500,000 budgeted, you gave out about, what, 200?
Yeah, so we have one applicant left who's still submitting some further information. We're waiting for documentation. Staff did go out on numerous occasions, door-to-door, letting them know about this program. These were the applicants. Our goal is to reallocate the balance. I'm hoping to bring that as part of our budget amendments in July, to reallocate the funding.
And then the next question I had was the micro grants. What can we do to educate or inform the businesses that they're available? A couple of them asked me, assuming we didn't even have any, so how can we communicate better and let businesses know that they are available?
We can do a lot, a lot, lot better, and one of the things I told staff is to put together a communications plan for our grants. First of all, what we want to do, and we're going to bring this potentially next month, is consolidate all our grants into one, one-stop-shop grant. Makes it easier for the staff, makes it easier for the community, so they don't apply for one, suddenly they're like, we should apply for that one. But also communicate our grants better to individuals out there, so they're putting together a engagement communications plan for the grants. It'll be social media, it'll be hitting the street, it'll be flyers, you name it. So we're going to have that campaign, and also workshops. We want to do, we want to start scheduling quarterly workshops in North Greenwood and the downtown, once we do consolidate those grants, and just advertise that we're having a workshop, us staff, what I mean, it's with the community, anyone that wants to come and learn about our grants or apply on the spot, we can, we're going to start doing that quarterly, once we consolidate, consolidate them into one grant.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving to the North Greenwood area. We do have, we have closed out the application acceptance phase of our Community Advisory Committee for Citizens Advisory Committee for North Greenwood. We actually collected 15 applications. Those will be scheduled for the city council, because the community redevelopment area plan does call that those advisory committee members be approved by the council, not the CRA trustees, so we're scheduling those coming up for, actually, you have the wrong dates here, but the next coming council meetings. Staff is working with Rosemary as far as how to do that the correct way, because we do have more applications than we do have seats. So I'll make sure those individuals are selected correctly. Plus, staff is working with Pinellas County as far as their appointment, and they're not just going to accept our applications, they actually advertise their applications as well for, for seats. And as far as our engagement efforts out there in North Greenwood, we do meet with coalition on a regular basis, we meet with business owners, and we meet with some residents on a regular basis as well. And once that Citizens Advisory Committee is in place, then we'll meet more frequently as well. And also charge staff to identify all of the nonprofits, credible nonprofits, financial institutions and so forth that have a stake in the North Greenwood area, so we can build relationships with them, so whenever we do have programs or whatever it may be, we can close some of those gaps on things that we can't do. Then as far as ARPA funds that we have out there, we did have $5 million, and we have been working very aggressively with, recently especially, to try to allocate those funds into projects. But before my time, is there was $1.4 million already awarded for grant recipients out in North Greenwood area, and this is kind of a list of those grants. It was for nonprofits and so forth out there. So $1.4 million for nonprofits. So $1.4 million for nonprofits. So that concludes that, but I do have an additional addendum to the Director's Report, if you allow me to put the items on the Elmo.
All right, this is the first for me.
Show it here.
Look at that. One shot.
Put my glasses on so I can see.
Well done.
Thank you. First, everything.
So we do have funds that are still, that need to be basically budgeted for the North Greenwood area, for the remaining portion of that $5 million. And this is more of a high-level overview of what we're going to do or planning out to do with those funds. So we have up here the slide, North Greenwood Area Community Development Area Roadmap. I was going to push the button here, but forget it, it's over here. So, like I said earlier, one of the things that community development areas have is a plan, and by statute, you have, everything needs to be in that plan. So my mantra is always, we have to work our plans. So the North Greenwood Community Development Area Plan that was executed and approved in May of 2023, it did have recommendations on how to use those ARPA funds, that $5 million for in the North Greenwood area. So what I did is, with staff, is we went through that plan and pulled out every single thing that had a recommendation on how to use that $5 million, and we put it into this proposed budget here. It's not completely done, this is more high-level, on how to use the remaining funds. For instance, next month, we're bringing to you a residential exterior improvement program to, for homeowners out there in North Greenwood area, in alignment with our plan. We're bringing you a commercial improvement grant that would be used by business owners out there to improve their businesses, again, in our plan. We're also creating programs to basically improve lighting and so forth in the area in the plan. So I'm not going to go through every single thing on here, but this is an overview on a lot of the items that we're budgeting to move forward, so we can basically execute and move our plan forward. Then, this is, unfortunately, I don't have access to Microsoft Project, otherwise I would have put this, put a Gantt chart better together for you. But this is, this kind of gives you a, kind of a high-level, can you zoom in a little bit? I see some squinting up here. So another thing that's in our plan as well was, this was actually approved by the trustees or the council before my time, was that $500,000 of those funds be used for a mini container mall on a CRA-owned property on the MLK area of North Greenwood. So we're working very, working closely with a certain group out there, so we can make sure that we move that forward. But in July, as you see up here, in quarter number three of our year, our calendar year, is we're hoping to have a RFP for you to review and approve, so that we can release for that mini container mall. And then for the residential exterior grant program, again, in quarter three, which is July, we'll bring that before you for approval. Then the plan also calls for us to hire, using this type of funds, not increment funds, increment fund is different, but the funds that we do have right now, to hire an outside organization to help with homeownership education, and we can work with ED&amp;H on that particular project, and most likely at the end of quarter number three of the year. Then also work with Pinellas County or other technical assistance-type entities for small businesses, again, and all of this seems to be in the third quarter of the year. So you see up here, then dissemination of information, we're at the bottom, that's an ongoing thing, that's why that particular Gantt, it just goes all the way across. But this is the project, this kind of high-level overview, just want to let you know that the funds that are remaining, staff is working diligently to make sure that we do put those into itemized budget to bring to you on a future date and for formal approval, in addition to all of these programs and projects that we're moving forward in North Greenwood. Any questions on the staff report, Director's Report, or this?
Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Any other business come for the Community Redevelopment Agency? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. This time, I'll call for the June 17, 2024, meeting of the City of Clearwater Pension Trustees. This time, we'll move to item 2.1 on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. This time, we'll go to item three on the agenda, so this is to be heard regarding items not on the agenda. Are there any citizens to be heard today? Seeing none, we'll move to item 4.1 on the agenda.
Accept the January 1, 2024 annual actuarial valuation for the employees' pension plan.
Good afternoon, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is requesting your acceptance of the pension plan's annual actuarial valuation dated January 1, 2024, which determines the city's required employer contributions for fiscal year 2025. I'd like to introduce the plan's actuary, Pete Strong, with Gabriel Roder Smith, who will review the valuation report with you.
I brought a, good afternoon. My name is Pete Strong, with Gabriel Roder Smith and Company. We've been the plan's actuaries for about 14 or 15 years now, and so I'm happy to be back here once again this year to present the results. In prior years, I've gone through a lengthy report, and I think in this kind of medium, it's best to have a PowerPoint. So I created a PowerPoint presentation this year, rather than going through a lengthy, hard copy report. So first, for those of you who are new, or actually for the public too, the purpose of an actuarial valuation is to calculate the value in today's dollars of all future benefit payments that are going to be paid from the pension plan, discounting them back to today, using the probabilities of future payment and discounting for interest, to calculate all the current liabilities of the plan, compare them to the assets, to have a funded status or funded ratio calculation. And then we use that information to calculate the required annual contribution to the plan. And then there are also several tables and disclosures that are required by the state, so it's also to comply with state requirements. The main assumptions we're using in the valuation include a 6.5% discount rate or investment return assumption, net of fees. So we assume that the plan's going to earn 6.5%, so we discount all future benefit payments back to today, using that 6.5% interest rate. We also, the second most important assumption, I believe, is the mortality assumption. We're using, as required by state law, the same retirement assumption used by the Florida retirement system. Those are based on the Pub 2010 mortality tables. And just for a little FYI, those tables currently project that a 65-year-old retired general employee or non-hazardous employee would live from 65 to 85.9 or 88.6, based on gender. A little bit less than that for a 65-year-old police officer or firefighter, 84.1 for retired males, and 87.2 for retired females, based on current age of 65. The other assumptions that we're using include salary increase assumptions, rates of retirement, disability separation, those are all driven by experience. We evaluate the experience once every five years. This was recently done this past year, based on the five-year period ending 12/31/22, and we implemented new assumptions in this valuation as a result of that. Also, every year, we compare what actually happened to what our assumptions were. Now, last year happened to be a good year, following 2022, which was a relatively disappointing year. Last year, the market return was plus 13.7% on the plan's assets, and with smooth assets, so we're a five-year period, and so the smoothed five-year average return assumption is 7.56. Both are above the 6.5% assumption, so that created a gain on assets of about 13.3 million. Five-year historical average return on assets, 8.8%, and the 10-year historical average return on assets, 7.1. So we're trending above the 6.5 assumption. Average salary increases last year were a source of experience loss, meaning they increased the liability more than expected, because we've been contending with inflation lately, so I tend to see this, that a lot of my clients lately, over the last couple of years, salary increases have been higher than assumed, 8.4 versus about 4.4 is expected. Mortality experience was lower than expected during 2023. We had a reduction of retiree payroll due to mortality of 602,000. Our mortality assumption expected that to go down by 1.27 million. So mortality was about half of what was expected during 2023. That's actually been a trend in Clearwater over the last 15 years. The total reduction in retiree payroll has been about 7 million, but we expected about 10 and a half. So over the last 15 years, mortality has been trending about two-thirds of what was expected. So good for retirees in this area, but it does increase the liabilities of the plan more than expected. So overall, the liability-related experience loss was 17.29 million. So the required city contribution for fiscal year 2025 was calculated to be 16.2 million, or about 14.4% of pay. That is up from last year's 13 and a half million, or 13.4% of pay. One of the main reasons was the assumption changes we made from the experience study. They increased the contribution by 1.6. And then also covered payroll in general increased by 11%. And so what that does is brings up the normal cost, which is the cost of benefits earned during the year, by about 1.1 million. The plan does have a $38 million credit balance that's been built up over several years by contributions by the city and excess of the required amount, and so also with interest. So right now, the interest alone on that credit balance is about $2.5 million, at 6.5%. So that credit balance is now a healthy place and a healthy point to be able to offset spikes or volatility that might happen. But the plan is in great shape, and the credit balance is well above where it has been historically. So now for the liability calculations. The total present value of all future benefits in the plan is just shy of 1.4 billion. That's including benefits not yet earned yet, but for all current members. That's up from 1.308 billion last year. The actuarial accrued liability is 1.17 billion. That's based on benefits earned through the valuation date, 1-124, and that's up from 1.12 billion last year. Also, this year, for the first time, we're required to calculate what's called an LDRAM, a Low Default Risk Measure obligation, which is kind of equivalent to what it would cost to go place all of the pension benefits with an insurance company. It's using low default risk, basically corporate or municipal bond rates, and that average rate was 4.63%. So if we were using 4.63 instead of 6.5, that liability would go from 1.17 billion to 1.47 billion. Compare those to the assets. The market value of assets as of 1-124 is 1.26 billion. The, that's up quite a bit from 1.14 billion last year, because of the positive 13% return during the year. With smooth assets, so we're a five-year period, the smooth asset value is 1.31 versus 1.25. And then net of the credit balance, we're at 1.27, and that's what we compare to the liabilities as the primary measure. So you divide the numbers from the previous two slides, you get to a market value-based funded ratio of 107.6, which is up from 100, basically 102 last year. The actuarial value-based funded ratio is 112%, almost virtually unchanged from last year, because the return on the actuarial value was only slightly above the 6.5% assumption. And then net of the credit balance, we're at 108.7 versus 108.8 last year. Concluding remarks, the plan is in great shape. This is one of only a small handful of plans in the state that are this large, that are fully funded, that are over 100% funded. And I took the state's database of results. Now, there's a lagging reporting period, so some of these valuation dates are in 2022 or early 2023, but from the latest data that's available, if you look at just plans over 200 million in assets, which there's about 60 of, Clearwater's funded ratio ranked number one. So amongst the large plans, now there are some smaller plans, they're saying at 130, 140%, but they have very low assets compared to Clearwater. Compare that to the largest plan in the state, which is the Florida retirement system, with 186 billion in assets. Their funded ratio as of their last valuation date was 81.4, and they're using 6.7, which is a little, you know, less conservative than the 6.5 being used here. So, any questions?
Any questions, comments from councilmembers? Anyone here from the public desire to speak to item 4.1?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept agenda item 4.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you for your time today. Yeah, we'll move to item 4.2.
Approved new hires for acceptance until the pension plan is listed.
Good afternoon, Tiffany Macris, Human Resources Director. I have no report, other than just here for any questions on the next five procedural items.
Any questions from the council? Anyone here from the public desire to speak with regard to item 4.2? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Move to item 4.3.
Approved the new hires for acceptance until the pension plan is listed.
Any questions from the council? Anyone here from the public desire to speak with regard to item 4.3? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve agenda item 4.3. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. This time, move to item 4.4.
Approved the following request of employees Jason Gray, Public Utilities Department, and Kevin Nuremberger, Planning and Development Department, to vest their pension as provided by Section 2.419 of the employees' pension plan.
Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing saying none, is there anyone here from the public desire to speak to item 4.4 on the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve item 4.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Move to item 4.5.
Approved the following request of Stephen Abies, Fire Department, Heath Runner, Fire Department, Regina DeWitt, City Attorney's Office, Randy Folds, Public Utilities Department, John Garakop, Solid Waste and Recycling Department, Carol McNally, Police Department, Howard McTessney, Information Technology Department, Christian Scholl, Fire Department, and Lori Sullivan, Library Department, for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the employees' pension plan.
Any discussion or comment from the council? Seeing none, is there anyone here from the public desire to speak to item 4.5? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve agenda item 4.5.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Item 4.6.
Approved the following request of Eric Hannah, Solid Waste and Recycling Department, John, Kevin, Insko, Police Department, Joseph Ruland, Police Department, and Theron Winston, Solid Waste and Recycling Department, for a regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the employees' pension plan.
Anyone from the council have any questions, comments? Seeing none, anyone here from the public desire to speak to item 4.6? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve agenda item 4.6. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. There is further business to come for the pension trustees. Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting. Let's take just a five-minute break, and then we'll convene the work session here in the backwoods.
Was that steel second bass line you just gave?
This time I'll call the order of the June seventeen, two thousand twenty-four meeting Clearwater City Council Work Session. This time we'll move to item two point one on the agenda.
Approved the temporary use agreements between the City of Clearwater and the Board of Trustees of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida.
Good afternoon, council. Mike McDonald, Brandon Aviation Director. This item is a request to approve a temporary use agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. This permit will allow the city to start the repairs of the piers, ramps, and docks at Seminole Boat Ramp, while legal works with the Department of Environmental Protection on a title issue that needs to be resolved and will take time. Two of the ten ramps have been closed due to safety concerns as the concrete piers have disintegrated around the gangway anchors. The other four piers have significant degradation and need repairs. There is no cost associated with this agreement. Staff really appreciates the Department of Environmental Protection for helping us with the title issue and the temporary permit so we can get the repairs accomplished. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions in council? You have consent?
Yep.
Okay. We have consent. Move to item three point one.
Amend the city's fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four operating capital improvement budgets at mid-year.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kailene Castle, Budget Director. This is the mid-year budget review for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. This report reflects six months of activity, October through March, and also includes council action to date. In the general fund, revenues and expenditures are increased by thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. This is in the city council budget to fund the salary increases for council members as previously approved. This increase is offset with an allocation of general fund reserves. With this adjustment, general fund reserves are approximately fifty-six point eight million or twenty-eight point five percent of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four general fund expenditure budget. This exceeds our minimum requirement by thirty-nine point nine million at mid-year. In the solid waste and recycling fund, expenditures are increased by two hundred and four thousand dollars for truck rentals, with offsetting revenues recognized from fund reserves, and this item was previously approved by the council. And in the parking fund, expenditures are increased by one hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars for increased condo association fees in Station Square. An amendment to parking revenues is included to offset this expenditure, which also was approved by the council. In the capital improvement fund, a net increase of one million, one hundred thousand, one hundred and nine dollars is reflected at mid-year, and this is due to the following amendments. One million dollars in grant revenue from the FDOT for the new water transportation ferry grant, which was approved by council in March. We're recognizing eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and three dollars in property owner share revenues, which have been received in various gas projects, and in an increase of eleven thousand, six dollars in county EMS tax reimbursement revenue for the fire rescue vehicle purchase, which was approved at your last meeting. In the special program fund, an increase of one million, three hundred, fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars is reflected at mid-year. Significant amendments include an increase of two hundred, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars in HUD revenue, recognized in the public facilities two thousand twenty-four program, an increase of sixty thousand dollars to create the Water Tank Mural Grant Program. This grant recognizes fifty percent funding from the National Endowment of the Arts. One hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars is received in public safety grant governmental revenues and agency assistance programs. Five hundred, thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars in contractual service revenue is received in the last quarter for police extra duty. Twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars in donation revenues is received to support parks and library programs. We've received seven thousand, two hundred dollars in foreclosure registry fees. We are recognizing an increase of one hundred, eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars in fines and court proceeds, and this is received in public safety programs and the tree replacement program. We've received thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars in insurance reimbursements in the police vehicle replacement program. And our special events revenues have received ninety-nine thousand, ninety dollars. This is related to our Sea Blues festivities. And finally, there is a total of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars transferred between existing special programs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
This time we'll move to item four point one on the agenda.
Approved the reallocation of ARPA-related funding.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is requesting reallocation of ARPA-related funds allocated to projects and programs in order to ensure all funds are encumbered or committed by a deadline of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four per ARPA guidelines. In August, two thousand twenty-two, council approved using the city's full allocation of ARPA funding in the amount of approximately twenty-two point five million as revenue recovery to fund fiscal two thousand twenty-two police department salaries and wages. Additionally, council appropriated approximately twenty point seven million of fiscal two thousand twenty-two general fund budget to various projects and programs that could now be accomplished due to the revenue recovery. These are identified as ARPA-related capital projects and programs. Due to the fact that this is ARPA-related funding, we must adhere to the related requirements for timely spending of ARPA funds, which includes commitment or encumbrance by twelve thirty-one, twenty-four, with the funds fully expended by twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. We have determined at this time that an allocation of six hundred and twenty-five thousand to main library renovations cannot be encumbered by the twelve thirty-one deadline, and are requesting reallocation as follows. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents to the ARPA-related solar project, increasing that allocation to two million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Fifty thousand to a new ARPA-related program in response to House Bill thirteen sixty-five requirements related to unauthorized public camping and sleeping. And additional three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents to the ARPA-related project for State Street Park improvements, increasing that allocation to one million, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. We have similarly determined that an allocation of five million to the North Greenwood CRA cannot be fully encumbered and committed by the twelve thirty-one deadline. We are requesting three million be reallocated to the City Hall construction project. We're requesting a simultaneous transfer of three million of general fund funding previously allocated to the City Hall project to be reallocated to the North Greenwood CRA to replace the ARPA-related funding. Finally, forty thousand of the allocation to cultural affairs nonprofit grants was specifically allocated to the Community Service Foundation for Plumhouse Renovations. We are requesting reallocation of this forty thousand to the Clearwater Historical Society for the Plumhouse renovations. Staff is available to answer any questions regarding these allocations.
Any questions for Mr. Ravens or staff? Councilmember took care of them.
Just wanted to say, you know, I was a little concerned when I realized that some of the time was running out in these allocations. Sorry. Thank you. I was a little concerned when I, when I was told and informed that the time was running out in some of these allocated funds and how, and the consequences of that. So I'm, I'm a little disappointed in that, but I have every confidence in our city council, in our city manager, that you'll implement whatever necessary changes you make, you need to do to make sure it doesn't happen again because we can't lose those funds. So that's it.
And other than the library, we're not moving any monies to things we weren't already planning on doing, right?
That is correct. So we are just moving those funds to projects that were already planned.
Things have already been approved.
That is correct.
I would also say our agenda is not being modified at all. So if anything, being out from under the timeline in the North Greenwood area is actually going to benefit us in terms of some, having some more latitude for some program expansion. Then we're going to couple some of our commercial redevelopment. We've got the Carlton Street property. We've got the Container Village item coming in. Jesus mentioned, but, you know, didn't go into a lot of detail about the commercial and residential grant programs. So a lot of these things are really going to kind of roll out in unison, as opposed to what would be a more bifurcated approach based on the deadline of some of the funds that we're using. So I want to make sure it's clear in the North Greenwood area in particular, the agenda has, is not changing in any way, shape, manner, or form.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Move to item four point two.
Presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Good afternoon. Monica Mitchell, Assistant Finance Director. This item is for the presentation of the city's annual audit for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The city's audit is a monumental undertaking, and it literally takes a village to accomplish it. I would like to thank all of the controllers and senior accountants throughout the city who prepare the financial statements for their respective funds, as well as all the support, all the support staff who contribute to the effort. Again, we have John Briermeier, partner with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, our external auditors, to present the audit.
Thank you, Monica. My name is John Briermeier with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. We've completed the financial statement portion of the nine thirty, two thousand twenty-three financial statement audit. I'd like to thank Jay and Monica as well. Their team puts a lot of time and a lot of effort into creating these statements. It comes to be about a two-hundred-page document. Again, for anybody that doesn't want to read the whole two-hundred-page document, the first thirty pages is what's considered the management, or the MDNA. That puts everything into layman's terms, all the activity for the year. It's pretty easy to digest and pretty easy to understand. So as part of the financial statement audit, we issued a couple of letters and reports for you. The first one's the independent auditors' report on the basic financial statements. That we issued an unmodified opinion. In that opinion letter, there's an emphasis, a matter of paragraph that was carried over from last year. It just means that you've implemented a new standard. The Government Accounting Standards Board issued standard eighty-seven and ninety-six. Ninety-six was implemented this year. Eighty-seven for leases was implemented last year. That's all that paragraph means. It doesn't change our opinion. The next one is the Government Auditing Standards Report. If there is any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we would note that in that report. I'm pleased to say that we do not have any. The last, or the second to last one is the Management Letter. That's prescribed by the State of Florida Auditor General. There's nothing to note in that report. Again, it's a clean report. And then the last one is the Government Investment Policies Report. You invest your funds in accordance with the Florida state statute. We investigate whether that's in compliance with that statute. Again, a clean report for that. You also have a single audit, so the city receives federal and state funds. Those funds are required to be spent in accordance with those agreements. This year, that is still in process. It'll be issued by, or by June thirtieth. There's three federal programs. They total about four point two million dollars. In total, the city received about four point five million. So we've tested the majority of the federal expenditures for those. The state projects, there's two state projects that are being tested separately. Those are about one point two million dollars, I'm sorry, two point four million of the total three million dollars that the city has received. Some other communications, no significant changes in the accounting policies. They're described in note one. Again, we did implement GASB ninety-six, that's Sabita's, that's treating software subscriptions more like a lease, brings it on as an asset and a liability. That means that this year, the city implemented the standard, and it's three point eight million of additional liability and five point six million of assets that were brought onto the books just for a change in accounting. The accounting estimates are used in these financial statements. Those include the fair value of investments, the risk management accruals, pension accruals, OPEB, and the estimated useful life of capital assets. We did not have any significant difficulties dealing with management during our audit. They're great. They provide us everything we need on a timely basis to answer all of the many questions we ask as part of our audit. There are no findings or issues to note. There are no corrected or uncorrected misstatements to note, and there are no internal control deficiencies to note as well. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the council? Okay, thank you. Move to item five point one on the agenda.
Accept Clearwater Gas System fiscal year 2024 dividend to the City General Fund.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Langill, Executive Director for Clearwater Gas System. I have a presentation, I want a brief presentation that I want to present here that will get queued up here in a second. While we're waiting on that, I'll go ahead and start in saying that Clearwater Gas System is a enterprise utility department for the city of Clearwater, and we have a requirement to pay a dividend to the city every year. That dividend payment is a minimum of one point seven million per year, so we do that every year. And I'm happy to say that this year, we were much more profitable in fiscal year 23, which reflects our dividend payment that goes to the General Fund in this current year, fiscal year 24, as well. So with that, I'll just give you a brief overview of Clearwater Gas System. We were established in 1924. We're celebrating our 100-year anniversary, as many of you already know that. We manufactured the gas up until 1959 on site, and now we take the pipeline gas since then, since 1960. Our service territory is approximately 330 square miles. We go all the way up to State Road 52 in Pasco. Our southern boundary is Almerton Road, and then on the beach communities, we go down to North Reddington Beach. That, with that, we serve 20 cities within the two counties, and we have 32,000 customers currently. Our revenues for last year were a total of forty-seven point two million. As you can see, that's broken down with many categories here, primarily the sale of natural gas and formerly propane. We did sell our propane operations this year, but that was included in FY '23 revenues of almost 40 million. We also have retail service functions. We sell appliances at 1.3 million. We do installation of house piping in the customers' home and businesses. That was just shy of 2 million last year. We own and operate a natural gas refueling station, which brings in about 750,000 a year. We also do appliance repairs at a little over 700,000. And then, of course, we have our franchise fees of 1.4 million, which encompasses all of the cities, not just Clearwater itself. And then, of course, taxes and other revenues that make up that total amount for last year. As I mentioned, we were more profitable than what we thought we were going to be projected in the budget. We had an 8.6, almost 8.7 million dollar profitability last year, and with the city council policies, either we give 1.7 million as a minimum or half of our profitability, whichever one is greater. Obviously, in this case here, we were significantly greater than that, so the excess dividend payment is over 2.6 million dollars. So I'm happy to say that will go to the General Fund and fund additional projects with that. This graph here just shows our historical dividend payments for the last 10 years. As you can see at the bar there, the minimum, last few years, we were at the minimum, but as you can see previous to that, we were significantly higher as well. In fiscal year '22, which would have been our performance in fiscal year '21, we had higher than normal gas prices. They were escalating, which caused our profitability to be a little off. And then last year, we had a, the financial component that finance and budget deal with, with our investment earnings, that we took a hit on that, so that impacted our profitability last year. But now we're back up to our normal range there. And then this graph here just shows our, you know, Section A is the dividend payment, and then all the other sections that go to the city of Clearwater. As you see, a total of about 11.7 million in total. And with that, the franchise fees and utility tax are, franchise were estimating that to be about 570,000 this year, as well as the utility tax, a little higher of 575,000, and that part is the benefit that goes to the city of Clearwater itself. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the council? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to say good job.
Thank you. Yeah, and this is a work session only item, so this is not, no action required here for today, but just wanted to present this to you, and hopefully we will have another banner year next year. With the sale of our propane, I will say with the sale of the propane came in about 4.2 million, 4.25 million, so that'll help offset that dividend payment. So we should see a higher profitability level at the end of this year. So we shouldn't be back at the 1.7 million next year, so hopefully we can bring back good news next year.
I said this at the anniversary celebration, but the citizens are just incredibly appreciative of the long history of Clearwater Gas serving our community, and now stretching out beyond Clearwater. It's a wonderful success story, and I'm glad that, you know, in the 100-year anniversary, we're certainly this year telling that story because it's been a valuable asset for the community and the citizens of Clearwater. So thank you and all the employees who have made Clearwater Gas successful over the years.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That will move to item 6.1.
Authorize the purchase of vehicles heavy and light duty and declare the vehicles and equipment being replaced as surplus and authorize for disposal at auction or trade-in.
Good afternoon. Perry Condon, Fleet Manager. The Fleet Division is requesting a consolidated expenditure authorization in the not-to-exceed amount of 17 million, 575,900 dollars for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment per the attached spreadsheet. Due to delays in manufacturing, the Fleet Department is requesting to begin the procurement process for the vehicles and equipment on the FY '25 vehicle purchase replacement list ahead of the FY '25 budget. That starts October 1st, 2024. In addition to prolonged delays in receiving vehicles and/or equipment, the order banks for the vehicles are fluid and open and closed without notice. Ordering now will enable fleet to get orders submitted in advance of other municipalities who may be ordering later. Finally, the authorization to purchase helps insulate the city against price increases as there have been substantial increases over the past years. What is not on your agenda today and will be on Thursday night is for the vehicles with long lead times and limited availability, staff is requesting to amend the fiscal year '23-'24 capital project budget, increasing amounts that would have been included in the fiscal year '24-'25 for motorized equipment replacement. For the remaining vehicles and equipment, purchase orders will not be issued until after the fiscal year '24-'25 budget is approved and next year funding is available. Any questions?
That's member Cotton.
I have a few questions for you. So I believe in making sure that our vehicles are staying up to par because I understand that through the years, you lose parts, those types of things. And after listening to you say that we're trying to get ahead of the curve, I love that. It does seem, however, like we have a lot of different divisions within the city that are requiring vehicles all at one time. Is that because we're trying to get ahead of the curve?
That's correct. Previous decisions were made by other management before this, and there were suggestions we made to get vehicles replaced at that time, and they didn't go through with it. And that's why you see the increase in certain divisions where there's a whole bunch of equipment. That's from that. That's a direct relation to it because our costs of repairs skyrocket.
Oh, yeah.
The longer you hold on to it. So we're realigning this to go back with our industry standards that we know and what we go by, and so you don't have that dramatic increase.
Okay.
You're going to pay for it one way or another by holding on too long.
Absolutely. So that's why I wanted to make sure that each one of these divisions has a plan for the replacement schedule. Do they? Or is that something that you reach out to them when you see an end of life?
We reach out to them, and we have a point system within the fleet software, which we're refining more and more, and we go by that and also several other factors, meaning with the individual departments. We make, we put in our, we call it the wish list. We enter that, supervisors in the fleet enter that, then we have that received from the using departments, and then we meet. And then we look at that and compare it to our point system. And the point system, what that does for us, it points us in the direction of vehicles you need to look at. And sometimes we hold on to them a little longer, and sometimes try to get rid of them sooner, and that's hopefully in the future, and future forecasting also, three-year, five-year, what does that look like?
For sure. So something that comes to mind right away is the sanitation or garbage trucks, right?
Absolutely.
The lead time on that, I think from our last meeting where we talked about, is 24 months now, and I'm sure that gets stacked up with more municipalities.
We have some now that, we ordered in '21, and we just received them recently.
Yeah, crazy. So...
That's only going to get worse, I think.
I agree.
I think it's speculation on the manufacturer's behalf because they don't want to lose customers and...
And the sad thing is, for my other colleagues, if you're not aware, when we put in an order, they still can increase prices even though you've locked in a lower rate.
But we're doing letters of intent, so that price stays locked in then.
Okay, perfect, because I've seen it where I work with certain vehicles that we order, all of a sudden, there's 15,000 extra dollars you have to add to a chassis or something like that.
And that has happened to us where we didn't have letters of intent.
Okay, perfect. So I like to hear the letters of intent. It's just something that, I mean, this is a big ticket item, right? Roughly 18 million dollars with all these different divisions. It almost seems like somewhere we weren't planning for the future, which I get COVID putting everything back however many years. Another question I had in here going through that extensive list was tugboat. Do we own a tugboat right now?
I can't answer that.
Okay, no problem. Could you answer why we would need a tugboat?
We do want staff here looking into that.
Perfect. Please.
We had a boat that looked like a tugboat. That's why I said I don't want to answer that. Sorry about that.
No, no, you're fine. I'm sorry. I do have a few questions.
Yeah, no, we have a tugboat. It pushes a barge with a crane on it, and that's what we use to do dock instructions.
Seawall, pair of those types of things.
Mm-hmm. It's 30 years old, and we're looking at replacing it.
Definitely needs to be replaced. I agree. Let me just look through my notes here. Sorry, guys. That's it? All right, cool. Thank you. Anybody else?
See you, Turner.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of comments on this one. So definitely understand and support the idea of getting ahead of vehicle purchases. As you've heard, there's very long lead times, and they're only getting worse, and the price escalation has been more and more substantial. So lots of benefits to this. I did give some feedback to staff on just the process of it in terms of what Mr. Perry was saying as far as budget amendment and how this gets approved. State law generally does not allow the council to commit to an expenditure of funds in a future fiscal year for which you do not yet have a budget. And so in order to accomplish an item like this, the proper way to do it, as Mr. Perry was saying, is to actually amend this year's budget because it's being brought forward in fiscal year '23-'24, and since you do not yet have a preliminary budget for next year, the proper procedural way is to amend this year's budget. So that is the change that he was mentioning. Happy to answer any questions about that, but that's just a kind of a finance and appropriations issue under state law, but it has nothing to do with the substance of the item. It's just a question of how it gets presented to council and how it gets reflected in our budget documents.
Just have one question. It's a big number, of course, as we've talked about, but there's no premium in here. We're not upgrading to electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles that causes an extra expense?
Not that amount.
Okay.
It's mostly the solid waste portion of it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All right. Do we have consent?
Yes.
Yes.
We have consent. Thank you. Move to item 6.2.
Authorize purchase orders to multiple vendors as listed for the maintenance and repair of city vehicles and equipment.
Perry Condon. ITB 3024 Vehicle Equipment Repair and Maintenance Services was issued on March 15th, 2024, and the city received multiple responses on April 18th, 2024. The pricing structure was based on hourly rates and parts and materials markup for repair and maintenance service on city vehicles and equipment to include automobiles, sedans, light trucks, medium trucks, heavy-duty trucks, off-road vehicles, and trailers. To ensure continuity of services requested to make multiple awards is listed below. Work performed under this purchase order will be for overflow work that the Fleet Division is unable to handle due to volume or time constraints. Any questions?
Any questions for the council? That's member Cotton.
No questions on this, but I did just pull up the vehicle list, and it does look like there are hybrid models in there. So I do believe, I don't know if it's an upgrade, however, there are quite a few hybrid models which could go to our sustainability plan. Okay, so just wanted to let you know that in accordance with your question.
Oh, I missed any of your questions.
Sorry.
Okay. I'm not sure it's a great time to be spending taxpayer money where our taxpayers can't afford upgraded vehicles, so concerned about that. I'm not sure what the additional cost is for a hybrid vehicle or...
Is it an upgrade?
Well, that's what I was going to say. Perry, if you'll explain in terms of, because we do that review in terms of, it's not a matter of a blanket statement that we will just order hybrid of hybrids available. It is a matter of looking at the cost versus benefit scenario, so Perry, if you can speak to that.
Yeah, it's the efficiency factor going forward and less maintenance in the vehicles, but as I always say, it's sales talk until we get it on our fleet to see what they actually do. They do cost a little bit more, but that's made up on the other side of it, of serviceability and the efficiency of the vehicle.
Yeah, you know, I would be against going any kind of electric vehicles total, but hybrid. There is a cost benefit to that with fuel and, as you just stated, so...
We made a decision to go hybrid in, I think, 2019, and started doing it on a smaller scale, and we recognize the efficiencies of it, and that's why we're going forward with it.
Yep, okay.
Okay, we'll stay on item 6.2 then and not go back to 6.1. 6.1, is there any discussion on that? That's 6.2. All right, do we have consent on 6.2?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have consent. Thank you. Item 7.1.
Approve a future land use map amendment from the institutional I category to the commercial general CG category for 407 South Saturn Avenue.
Thank you, Carr Brothers and Planning and Development. This future land use map amendment involves three parcels of land totaling 2.284 acres located on the northeast corner of Goff's Bay Boulevard and South Saturn Avenue. The applicant, St. Paul's 3rd Church, is requesting the amendment to the future land use category from institutional to commercial general. The applicant has indicated the future use of the property to be commercial, however no site plans have been submitted at this time. And they've also submitted a companion case, REZ 2024-02001, to amend the zoning atlas. So currently, the subject property is occupied by a place of worship and associated parking, and it has three total buildings with a just over 25,000 square feet of square feet. The proposed amendment would allow the property to have a consistent future land use category with the remaining block, and will also allow for uses to be consistent with the surrounding uses. The proposed future land use amendment to commercial general would necessitate an amendment to the countywide map from public semi-public to retail and sales. And additionally, we would also have to amend the future, the countywide land use strategy map from the scenic non-commercial corridor residential category to the scenic non-commercial corridor mixed-use category. Planning and development staff has determined that this proposed future land use amendment is consistent with the Community Development Code, as well as a comprehensive plan as detailed in the staff report. At the May 21st, 2024 Community Development Board meeting, the CDB unanimously recommended approval of this item. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the council? Thank you. Move to item 7.2.
Approved zoning atlas amendment from Institutional I District to the Commercial C District for 407 South Saturn Avenue.
Carr, Brotherton Planning and Development. So this is the companion case, the case LUP 2024-02001, and this involves two parcels being a 2.056 acre portion of that 2.284 acre parcel that was just described. So the applicant is requesting to amend the zoning atlas's nation from institutional to commercial, and again, it will be consistent with the surrounding block and permit existing uses to be incompatible. The planning and development department has determined that this amendment is consistent with the Community Development Code and comprehensive plan as detailed in the staff report. And again, at the May 21, 2024 Community Development Board meeting, the CDB recommended approval.
Any council discussion on item 7.2? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item 8.1.
Awarded Purchase Order to Kaminga Road Vets for Potable Water Piping Improvements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mike Flanagan, Public Utilities Assistant Director. This authorizes $10,52886.5 purchase order for potable water piping system improvements with a 24-month completion timeframe. Looping, replacing, upsizing, and relocating these potable water pipes was identified as a priority in the 2020, 2022 master plan. Aligned with high-performing government, this advances both public infrastructure maintenance and the city's goal of community well-being and environmental stewardship. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions regarding Agenda 8.2? Seeing none? Do we have consent? We have consent. Item 8.2.
Authorized Purchase Order to C, EC Motor and Utility Services, Southeast Pump Specialist Inc., and Tampa Armature Works.
Good afternoon, Mike Flanagan, Assistant Director of Public Utilities again. This authorizes, this authorization allows purchase orders for electric motor and power pair services up to a total of $900,000 annually. The initial term is June 18, 2024 through June 17, 2025, with an option of three one-year renewals. This award is being made to multiple vendors to ensure continuity of supply and flexibility in ordering. Our procurement strategy prioritizes cost effectiveness by seeking the vendor offering the most competitive unit price for the required item. In instances where immediate availability is crucial to timely repairs, alternative vendors may be considered. This aligns with the city's strategic objectives by minimizing environmental risks and upholding high service levels for critical infrastructure. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions from the council regarding Agenda 8.2? Seeing none, do we have consent?
Yes.
We have consent on Agenda 8.2. Thank you. Agenda item 8.3.
Authorized Purchase Order to Florida ULS Operating LLC for Landscape Maintenance Services.
Good afternoon, Mike Flanagan, Assistant Director of Public Utilities. This authorization allows for purchase order for landscape services at public utilities facilities up to a total of $175,000 annually. The initial term is through June 21, 2024, through June 20, 2025, with the option of two one-year renewals. Services would include 13 sites relating more than 115 acres. Aligned with high-performing government, this prioritizes systematic public infrastructure management. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions from the council regarding Agenda 8.3? Do we have consent on Agenda 8.3?
Yes.
We have consent. Agenda item 9.1.
Approved Increase in Proposal from Coca-Locus Contracting for the Construction of the Clearwater
Good afternoon, Council. Mike McDonald, Marine and Aviation Director. I'm here today with Jeff Walker. He's a senior project manager with the City of Clearwater Public Works Department, along with, with Nicole Polly with Moffett Nickel, Jose Calmarino with Coca-Locus Contracting, and Rod Voight with Coca-Locus Contracting. We're going to be showing you a presentation today demonstrated the need for new infrastructure. As a docking system at the Clearwater Beach Marina has surpassed its serviceable life, and utilities have been deemed obsolete. Currently, power is turned off to the marina during times of high tides. The proposed new marina would bring a modern and resilient infrastructure to the marina. We will be able to charge market rate for the slips, and we have captured new revenue streams for the marina to ease financial burdens to our taxpaying citizens. The City of Clearwater has operated a marina at the Clearwater Beach Marina since the 1940s and was expanded by 1965 to what essentially exists today. Over the past 59 years, the marina has been repaired but never refurbished or fully replaced. In 2005, the city considered replacement of only the docks at an estimated cost of $8 million. For whatever reason, that project was never started. In October of 2021, due to the advanced age of all overwater structures and utilities, city council authorized Moffett Nichols of Tampa, Florida to begin the design and permitting process to replace these components and incorporated vision that integrated beach walk with the beach marina creating marina walk. So the projected goals are to replace the aging docks and replace the modernized the marina utilities. We currently have 208 volt service at the marina for our marina slip tenants. At the end of the circuit, at the end of the dock, the voltage drops to 192 volts. When the voltage drops, the amperage of electronics increases, which has caused ACs, refrigerators, and other electronics on tenants' vessels to be damaged and destroyed due to the extreme heat caused by the amperage increase. A lot of our tenants have opted to purchase a product called a buck booster for several thousand dollars, which will increase the volts to minimize the increase in amps. They also must be selective on what electronics they are able to use simultaneously. The new marina will incorporate 240 volt service and completely modernize the electrical system of the marina. The floating features will create resiliency and will reduce the stress on docking infrastructure by not having to adjust mooring lines due to tide fluctuations. This will also keep the utilities out of the water by rising and lowering as the tides rise and lower. Over the last several years, we have had several deficiencies with the docking system, including concrete pilings that have sprawled, exposing the metal rebar, docks that have partially collapsed due to storms and have, and wave actions, including last December, a storm came through and knocked out the use of the fuel dock for four days while a crew scrambled to make the repairs. We're also optimizing marina slip mix and layout. When the marina was being built from the late 40s to the end of the 60s, the vessels were smaller and narrower, with the main vessel being sailboats. The modern vessels are powered boats that are longer and wider with increased power demands, air conditioners, TVs, computers, refrigerators, et cetera. We're also able to utilize our current footprint by adding two dock trees while maintaining the same slip count. We are also able to find new revenue streams to help reduce the final, financial impacts to taxpayers by identifying the potential for upland storage for our commercial tenants and by providing kiosk along marina walk for sales and marketing to lease out to commercial tenant operators. We also wanted to reduce the congestion along Coronado Avenue. That was a goal of ours. We did this by creating marina walk, which is a plaza-style walk where the kiosk sitting area shade structures will line the walkway from the crosswalk from beach walk into the marina, up to the marina building, and then into fishing villages where all the fishing boats will be lined up and on display. There will be a wrought iron fence that runs along the seawall between the docks and the sidewalk along Coronado. This will allow for better pedestrian flow and safety along the Coronado sidewalk. Another goal was to maintain the commercial fleet operations during construction. With 58 commercial operators running businesses out of the marina, it was decided that the construction had to be completed in phases. This ended up adding to the cost of the construction with the additional mobilization of contractors. There will also be two 60-foot ferry slips added to the marina with the ferry service connecting downtown Clearwater with Clearwater Beach. These two ferry slips are serviceable for the two brand-new ferries that are currently being built. For resiliency, the seawall cap is being raised above the code minimum. Fixed docks for the commercial fleet will be elevated, and much-needed dredging will take place throughout the marina. At this time, I'm going to turn the, this presentation over to Jeff Walker to get into
Good afternoon. Jeff Walker, Senior Professional Engineer with Public Works Department. I have a long, lengthy text here to read to you because I think this, this very large project, this very important project requires you to understand what we've done so far on this project, the effort that's been put into this project, and we're at a critical point in this project, the funding. When selected as project manager, I was tasked with having the new marina designed and constructed. Now that Mike has introduced the project to you, I would like to review with you in some detail the project's progress to date, what's coming up, and the associated risks. So this is a very busy slide, but we're going to get through it because all of these items took a lot of effort, and I want you to be aware of them. This, as Mike mentioned, this project was initiated due to the poor conditions of the docks and the problematic utilities. Before the project was formally initiated, the city commissioned four independent studies between 2005 and 2020. I can summarize all those studies in three sentences. The dock layout is inefficient and woefully underutilizes the city-owned submerged land. The electric utility equipment is 20 to 40 years old or older, was straight out of the report, or older than 40 years, and experiences voltage drop issues and other failures, as Mike referenced earlier. In addition to all that, many sections of the seawall are showing signs of incipient failure, that seawall is starting to fail. After the seawall study in 2020, the city started the beach marina replacement project with a design request for qualification, a formal process, we call RFQ for short, in 2021, and selected the marine engineering consulting firm Moffett and Nickel, hereafter, sometimes I'll call them M&amp;N, sometimes Moffett and Nickel, from amongst eight other, well, total of eight applicants. So there were seven others, and they were, I believe, my recollection, I was on that committee, they were unanimously chosen to be the EOR. They were tasked to develop a master plan and subsequently construction plans and specifications. Right away, M&amp;N performed a market study of similar-sized marinas from Dunedin south to Sarasota County. They also reached out to the Clearwater Beach Marina commercial tenants. This included face-to-face meetings and a comprehensive tenant, tenant survey. From that information and regulatory requirements, M&amp;N developed a master plan that was well-received when presented to council in October of 2022, and I think two of you were here for that presentation. I can summarize the direction given by council. It was, and to quote, I wrote it down that day, "Do it right. Don't cut corners and replace, not repair, the seawall." With those directions, Moffett and Nickel proceeded to complete the design and presented the final design to council in November of 2023. Again, this presentation was well-received. With the final design complete, the construction manager, RIS, the CMAR, or we call it C Mar, began the process of developing their guaranteed maximum price proposal. In a later slide, I'm going to describe in more detail what that process involves, as I believe it is commonly misunderstood, the GMP, the C Mar GMP development. Our C Mar, our C Mar, J Coca-Locus Contracting, was selected back in June of 2022 from three candidates in, again, a formal RFQ. The process of developing, excuse me, the process of developing the GMP via a public bid and value engineering, fancy word for cost-cutting, took place between December of last year and this May, this past month. While all that design work and GMP development was ongoing, in the background, M&amp;N was working with Woods Consulting, one of their subs, on the multitude of necessary permits. But before the first permit was issued, there was a serious unexpected problem to resolve. A federal channel existed. It's been there a long time, and no one knew about it. We learned quickly that it was going to be a big problem. We couldn't rebuild the marina as it is now with the current footprint. You couldn't rebuild it without de, excuse me, de-authorizing that channel. So that was undertaken through the diligent efforts of Eric Gandy, the former Marine and Aviation Director, and he was successful in having an act of Congress. He slid some language in through a lobbyist to have that channel deauthorized, so that one, now we were legal, the existing, and two, we could build the new marina further out into that channel. The permits and their status are, the federal, excuse me, the FDPE Environmental Resource Permit, that's the second bullet under permitting. Author, was authorized in June 2023. The FDPE Stormwater Exemption, we received that in September of 2023. The City Level 2 Flexible Development Order was approved by the Community Development Board in October 2023. The US Army Corps permit is pending, but we've heard that it should be issued shortly. That's looking promising, and similarly, the Pinellas County Water Navigation Control Authority permit is pending. We are in various stages of submitting, 16 building permits are required for this project with the city's building department. That takes us now to grants. Grants are equally as important as permits because after all, if you don't have the money, you're not going to have a project, right? Therefore, via the efforts of both the cities and Moffett and Nichols Grant Administration Staff, the following grants are being pursued, and I'm happy to say we are confident that significant funding, and if we got hit all of them 100%, it'd be $14.2 million in grants from those four grants. Those four grants being the Sport Fish Restoration, the Tourism Development Council, the, which Dan Slaughter, Assistant City Manager, has been working hard on, the FDPE Resilience League Grant, and the Clean Vessel Act Grant. So that covers what the project's design and construction team members have been working on up to now. To keep the project on track for a spring 2026 completion, that's a construction completion, spring 2026, and avoid future construction cost volatility, we're counting on the approval of the C Mar GMP no later than mid-July. With that approval, we expect to have the building permits approved, all our building permits in hand in September 2024, start the construction in October 2024, and complete the construction in the spring of 2026, May, let's say May. Everyone wants their plan to go off without a hitch, but of course, there are risky, there are risks and slash unknowns that have to be considered. The top three for the beach marina project are the continuation of inflation and supply chain issues, which you talked about in regards to fleet, tropical storms and parking reduction. The first two are uncontrollable, but we have allotted contingency for both. The third, temporary parking reduction, has been planned for. So we're finally off that slide. And we're looking at an aerial rendering of the west end of the Memorial Causeway where FDOT has given us approval to have 200 temporary parking stalls there during construction. A project of this size will require laydown and staging areas, although the C Mar will use the city's San Key Yard. use the city's San Key yard, that's at San Key, we have a yard there, but it's limited in size, for construction material storage. There will be a need to use areas of the marina parking lot during both construction phases. The project is addressing that issue by having this temporary parking lot on the west end, and fortunately, we have a pedestrian walkway, a bridge that leads you right to the marina. That, if you were to count up all those stalls, is about 200, I might have already mentioned that. The project area, the scope of the work includes the demolition, that's the yellow-hatched area, of the existing fixed timber docks and the maintenance dredging also in two distinct phases, everything's done in two phases. That allows the continuation of the commercial operations. The demo will include overwater kiosks and storage sheds, the seawall and adjacent sidewalk, and the southerly first row of parking on the west side of Marina Cantina, because this area, I don't, can you see the mouse? Anyways, I'm sliding over the area where the new marina walk will be, and we need, we need to remove that row of parking to give us the width for marina walk. We expect the marina to come apart fairly easily, and with your permission, I'd like to show you firsthand, I'd like to approach the council and show you what we're dealing with in regards to failures, okay? So this is the show-and-tell portion of the presentation. We've got more, but this is the new connection, drift-in-tie one, you think, right? Here's what it's going to move. Now, this diameter is supposed to continue for full length. Here's another one. So again, I think when we pull on this dock, it's not going to take much to knock it down. If you want to hold one, we're going to do it next.
No.
Let's compliments of Mike, he dug those up for me. But I'm the one showing them. These rods, these connecting rods from the marina clearly show failure by corrosion, the docks are at the end of their useful life, and thus will be relatively easy to dismantle. One bonus of having old docks. In order to keep the commercial fleet in operation, the demolition will take place in phases. I'll discuss the construction phases in more detail in a slide shortly. This slide shows the layout of the new marina. The number of slips remain the same, that's important, because to add a slip would have added much, maybe more than a year for the permitting process, it's very hard to add a slip. The tour boats, rentals, fishing fleet, and ferry in the pink outlined area are along the seawall via a fixed timber boardwalk, complete with finger piers, and they requested, they were very consistent and vocal on their need to have their boats on the seawall on fixed timber docks. The recreational fleet, outlined in blue, are moored on three floating aluminum docks, docks B through D. Those are the three in the blue square. A dock to the east, also called the fuel dock, will carry the transient, the purple, the day, green, and fuel yellow slips. This new layout maximizes the use of the city-owned submerged land without encountering extensive permit delays. It provides the commercial fleet with a familiar layout, they're up against the seawall, they're working from fixed wood docks, and operational requirements. The recreational fleet will enjoy the benefits of floating docks, which apparently appear to be replacing fixed timber docks nationally. Floating docks are the way to go. On the uplands, the project creates marina walk, which will effectively create a continuation of beach walk. Marina walk will alleviate the unsafe pedestrian queuing along the east side of Coronado Drive, we've all seen it, right beside all those, all that traffic moving down Coronado. They'll all now be in this area here, and the next slide actually shows marina walk better than this layout slide. So we'll turn to that slide, there it is. Now you can see marina walk with the 10 duplex kiosks on this slide more clearly. It contains 10 duplex kiosks, providing 20 separate leases. There are another four similar leasable spaces on the east portion of marina walk. The next slide will show those two, those two buildings that both have two leases, lease spaces. In addition to the kiosks, there will be many areas to sit and relax under attractive, attractive fabric shade structures. The construction will occur in two phases, west followed by east, allowing continuation of the marina's commercial operations. It's important to note at this time that during the value engineering exercise, it was determined that the cost of doing two phases versus getting everyone out, doing the whole project in one shot, that was over $1 million, that cost. We verified that with the marine contractor and others. It takes, takes more money to do two mobilizations. Prior to the demolition of the west half of the marina, all the recreational tenants will be required to leave for the duration of the construction, so all the recreational are gone, we keep the commercial, and they stay in operation. The commercial fleet in the affected west half of the marina will be temporarily relocated to the east side along the existing seawall and fuel dock. Phase one will take longer than phase two, phase one's going to take a year, phase two, seven months. It is scheduled to start in October this year and finish a year later. The sequence is starting on the west first, followed by the east, was to allow the marina fuel station to stay in service, the fuel docks, the A dock on the east, as a law, as long as possible, providing convenience for all boaters and revenue for the city. During phase two, all the commercial fleet will relocate to the newly constructed west slips, so they'll all move back to now the new slips, and they should be complimenting on moving back to new slips. This will be followed by construction of the new seawall, sidewalk, kiosks, buildings, dredging, and installation of docks A and B on the east side during phase two. I would like to note at this time that docks B through D are aluminum docks, floating aluminum docks, while the outboard dock, Dock A, is a floating concrete dock, because it has the greater, there's greater fetch, and floating concrete being heavier, more mass, are better equipped to handle waves and attenuate waves. But floating concrete docks are significantly more than floating aluminum docks, and I'll go over that shortly. Initially, oh, I'm going to go over it now. Initially, all the docks were intended to be floating concrete, but via a deductive bid line item, we learned that 1.9 million could be saved by using heavy gauge, stiff-tubular-framed-aluminum-floating docks for those B3, B, C, and D. So we took that opportunity to save almost $2 million. So that's what it will look like, I mean, the question is, what will it look like when it's completed? This slide shows some rendering, and I'll quickly go through each of the figures. The top left is a plan view that shows the west end of the marina and the marina walk. You can see the one row of parking had to be eliminated. The brown is the fixed timber boardwalk and finger piers. To the right of that is a view from, let's say, Krabby's, looking south, the same area, and you can have, gives you a sense of marina walk, the duplex kiosk buildings, and the shade structures, and some of the hardscape, the many benches we have placed for people to sit on. The bottom left is at the west end of the marina walk, looking east, and that's one of those duplex kiosks, and that blank wall there, that blue wall, that's for murals, all those walls will be for murals. And the center on the bottom row is the corner, the west corner of the marina, where the sidewalk of Coronado Drive meets the marina walk, and that is an art piece. By city ordinance, the project's obligated to have 200 million, 200 million, $200,000 in public art in this project, and that's a placeholder, that's not the art, the art's still yet to be commissioned. And the far right is, you're sitting close to that art piece, looking down the boardwalk towards the east. So I've given you a lot of information, we're getting close to the end of the presentation to digest, I just want to do a quick summary of the final design before we take a deep dive into the CMAR process, and then we'll be asking for questions. So the final design summary, we have a, I'll just go through the bullets quickly. The marina maintains the same slip count and balanced slip mix. Commercial boat slips remain docked at the perimeter as they requested, as the commercial fleet requested. We have resilient floating docks that can go up and down with, not only the tide, but with storm surge. The fixed docks and gangway platforms are raised 15 to 24 inches, depending where you are in the marina, to accommodate rising sea levels, so we're resilient there. City ordinance requires, if we put it, if you construct a new seawall, you have to have that seawall cap out at six-foot NGV, NGVB, which is on, at our location, that means the seawall's 15 to 18 inches higher, depending where you are in the marina. Marina walk extends the beach walk with shade and seating. The kiosk located upland near the primary dock entrances away from Coronado Drive for safety purposes, we move all those people out and away from that traffic, and of course, the new marina will be fully ADA compliant. So this is the last busy slide, but it's important because we went through a CMAR GMP development process, and I want you to just know how many steps are involved and how competitive that process is. To recap, the C-MAR J. Kokolakis was selected by a formal competitive RFQ process, and in January 2023 was awarded by council a pre-construction services contract. This allowed them to join the project team relatively early during the design process. Therefore, when the final design was completed in November of 2023, they were very familiar with the scope of work. C-Mars, as a general rule, do not self-perform, but rely on subcontractors and vendors to complete the work as specified in the EOR's construction documents, as C-Mar is responsible for managing those subs and vendors, and thus the final product. J. Kokolakis developed and advertised the bid package for subcontractors and vendors in December of last year. To give time for ample competition, the bid did not close until March of 2024. During this time, J. Kokolakis promoted the project, especially amongst those specialty trades that have few companies, like marine and electrical, for electrical overwater, there's, most do not have the insurance for that work. Marine contractors, they handle the seawall dredging and dock installation, are one of those specialty trades. Five marine bids were received, but only two were eventually found to be responsive. By responsive, we mean they met all the bid requirements, such as experience with similar projects in size and complexity. So we had two that were responsive, and of those two responsive bids, the selected marine contractor was only 1.4% lower than the competition. The marine's scope of work accounts for nearly two-thirds of the GMP. There was only 5% difference between the electrical biz. The electrical scope of work, that includes uplands and overwater, makes up 13% of the GMP, so together, marine and electrical make up more than 3/4 of the GMP, just those two contractors, subcontractors. The C-MAR issued the draft GMP proposal of $49.3 million back in April, and immediately we knew we were significantly over budget, so we, we being the C-MAR, the EOR, and the city, started a value engineering exercise, which reduced the GMP by 5.8 million, resulting in a final C-MAR of $43.5 million in May last month. The overwhelming concern of the project team is that any significant delay in acquiring, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped a slide. I want to quickly show you what two critical construction materials have done since January. This slide shows aluminum, we have aluminum docks, so we have a lot of aluminum. It's gone up, if you use that dash line at top, so I didn't go right to the peak and I didn't go right to the trough, but that's a 17% rise in the cost of aluminum since the beginning of the year. That was from beginning of the year to last week. This shows copper, we have a lot of copper wiring, we have some aluminum wiring underground, but we have a lot of copper wiring, reaching all the way to the end of all these docks, and then out to all the, so we have a lot of copper, and copper has gone up even more since January of this year, it's gone up 21%. So, back to what I started earlier, the overwhelming concern is that any significant delay in acquiring these construction materials could significantly increase the cost of the project. You can see, it's going up monthly, but who can tell what's going to happen in the future? The trend is not good. With that, I conclude our presentation. We have, as Mike mentioned, the EOR, Moffett &amp; Nickel, and the CMAR, C-MAR, J. Kokolakis, they're here to help us field questions or your concerns. I appreciate your time.
Will I speak to the role, burden?
Okay. Hold on, don't run away.
No, we're not going anywhere, just pack it up.
I've been following this since 2018, this is a very complicated, complex project, and it's something that it needs to be done. We, we have a very old infrastructure, and it's a very important project to me, because it needs to get done. Now, you said something before on the last slide, that aluminum wire was going underground, but copper wire was run out through the docks. Are you using aluminum electric wire?
I said the same thing, I'm sorry, when I heard that, I said the same thing, because we're all thinking of the aluminum wire instigated house fires, but this is just the feeders underground to the substations, and they saw, they've identified what the problem was. It was the terminations of those aluminum wires in the houses. They have new ways, they hydraulically clamp the lugs.
Where the connection was.
Where the connection is. It's not the wires, the connection. And our EOR, and after my research, I'm satisfied that four underground feeders aluminum wire works, and if you look at the value engineering table, we save hundreds of thousands of dollars doing that.
Okay, well, I understand value engineering, I just don't want to go the other way and have an issue. Listen, that was a very good presentation. Listen, that was a very good presentation. You covered a lot of things on that that needed to get covered, because I get asked questions all the time, all different types of questions on this. You covered everything. And I'm going to suggest to council, I know it's a long presentation, but I would be remiss putting this on consent. I think it needs to be talked about to the general public so they understand. I mean, I'm not saying I'm not for, I'm for this project, but I, I'm just putting this out to the rest of council that maybe we ought to take it off consent. Forty-three million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money to put on consent.
Vice Mayor David, before anyone else addresses.
Say your turn.
Okay. There's a lot to unpack here, obviously. As the vice mayor said, this has been a longstanding project, has gone through many iterations, many different leadership teams, et cetera. And so what I'm about to say is not so much commenting on the merits of the project or the different iterations of it, but because the legal issues are so carefully bound up with that here, I think it does require some exposition. So there's really two things that I want to say, and then I'll unpack it a little bit more. Number one, just from a process standpoint, to the vice mayor's point about the item not being on consent, I, I do not believe this item either could be on consent, or, so that will address that concern, nor do I believe it can be approved on a single reading. Our city charter has specific provisions dealing with projects or any expenditure, really, that has a budget deficit. This particular project has a budget deficit exceeding $5 million, which is a threshold in our city charter. Once that threshold is crossed in terms of project deficits, it does require under our city charter two separate readings along with advertising. I know the clerk was out of town last week, but that's certainly something I can discuss with her to make sure it gets advertised. So if the council does decide to move forward with the op, with this agenda item, it will require a first vote on Thursday, not on consent, and then I'll work with the clerk's office to get advertising for the next council meeting, and then it can be voted on separately after advertising, after a second reading. So that's just kind of a procedural observation. Again, that's because the project has more than a $5 million deficit from what is currently budgeted. The second observation I want to make is that there's been a lot of discussion over grant funding, and the TDC grant, as we know, is particularly important to us. There's been a lot of talk over potentially us getting $10 million from the TDC that is currently in the TDC budget, as mayor and city manager are aware, so we're certainly very optimistic we'll get that money. However, nothing in life is guaranteed, and so the council does need to understand that we are now looking at binding the city contractually to our construction manager, which means that Kokolakis will be entitled to forty-three and a half million dollars from the city, regardless of whether that funding materializes or not. Again, we're all very optimistic that it will, but I cannot swear to it. I don't think any of us can actually swear to it, although it is in their budget, and certainly we expect, in all likelihood, that it will be approved. And so I want the council to understand, second, as you vote on this, that you are making an enforceable contractual commitment for the city to fully fund this project, regardless of what other grant funding materializes. So those are really the two main things I wanted to say. And then just kind of third, in parentheses, in all candor, I, you know, because this project has had such a long history, I do think it's worthwhile, although I would not normally do it, just to review a couple of the past events in this project, and especially for the benefit of new council members who have just joined. This project was first approved from a design standpoint in October of 2021. At that point, that was before I even joined the city, and I was actually getting ready to move to Clearwater at the time, certainly well before the current city manager was in her seat, well before Mr. Slaughter was in his seat, and well before Mr. Williamson was in his seat. But that project from a design standpoint, and that, that contract for design services, which was one and a half million dollars, give or take, was approved with Moffett and Nickel in October of 2021. At that point in time, the council had expected the project to be around eighteen point three million dollars, which was going to be funded according to the agenda item, all through Penny for Pinellas money. What has changed, you know, since then, and why is the, the city now in a position where you have a substantial budget deficit in the project, which is now triggering these procedural requirements under the city charter? Honestly, these requirements for multiple readings and advertising typically do not come up. This is highly, you know, uncommon, I would say, for us to be in this situation where you have a project with that large of a deficit. I looked back through a little bit of the procedural history this morning, and city manager and I were even talking about it, to, so we could wrap our arms around how and why we end up in a situation where the deficit that's being presented to council is so large on the project. Some of it are certainly things involving the number of moving parts. I well remember the issue with the federal channel. Yes, that did take some time. Yes, we had to work through that. Legal team was very involved in that. I remember all of that. However, when we look through the procedural history, as Mr. Walker pointed out, the council was shown three different concept plans in October of 2022. And at that point, as Mr. Walker pointed out, the current, like, three new council, three members were not there, two of the council members were there. What's important, though, is that when that plan was shown to the council, and this I do remember, plus it's on video, the council was given three options, but the most comprehensive option that was shown was $28 million. And so that was the price estimate that was given to the council at that time. So yes, it is true that the council at that time did say, do it right, let's go ahead and do the entire project, but the council was given a $28 million price tag associated with that, not the forty-three and a half million that we see today. So how do we get from $28 million that the council approved as a concept plan in October of 2022, all the way to a forty-three and a half million dollar project only 18 months later? And the answer to that question is that if we look back in November of 2023, so this is now only six months ago, at that point, there is now updated presentation from the designer. At that point, Kokolakis, as the CMAR, was also involved already with the city in terms of working on pre-construction, value engineering, and honing in those price estimates. In November of 2023, that presentation had revised the project cost to thirty-four point six million from $28 million. So that's when we really started to see that price deficit. It was well after the council had approved the concept plan of $28 million in October 2022. It really was not until November of 2023 that that deficit in budget, in available budgeted funds really started to become evident. So we then go from thirty-four point six million dollars in November of 2023 to a place where we now have a GMP of forty-three and a half million dollars six months later. So all of that is to say that it is kind of a combination of circumstances that has led to this point. The reason we don't normally see this in other projects, even though there is inflation, even though we all know there have been shortages in materials, labor, in the post-COVID environment, is, is really two things. Partially because most of the projects we do aren't this big, right? Most of them just, we don't need this kind of money. They don't involve these kind of moving parts. They don't involve things like the federal channel. They don't involve infrastructure that has fallen into, in some cases, a state of catastrophic disrepair. You know, all of those factors, I think, are playing into it. But also the fact that most projects with project deficits, even those in a time of high inflation, are typically identified earlier in the process. And here, I think that that project deficit did not really become known in any significant way until November of 2023, and then it was not until now that we've actually gotten a final GMP, that the council sees, okay, this is actually the final, final cost, and even those numbers that were given in November of 2023 are off by $9 million. So that's a long explanation, but I think that's kind of why we're in the place where we're at. Candidly, I was a little bit surprised to hear from Mr. Walker on some of the bidding aspects of this. That was something that I had not seen, was not familiar with. I know that, and I remember, that in January of 2023, the council selected Kokolakis as the construction manager. But as is common with most of our construction projects, when the city approves a construction manager, typically you're just approving a contract for pre-construction services. So they are working with us on the design, value engineering side. That's a small contract. So this one that this council approved in January of 2023 is only $100,000. But again, that's typical for a pre-construction agreement with Kokolakis or any other CMAR. From there, typically, we would negotiate a purchase pro, I'm sorry, a GMP with the construction manager who's working with us on pre-construction. Going out for bidding is fine, but that involves a very different process. Candidly, I did not know we had gone out for a bid, but I think, but if that's true, then that certainly is something that I think, you know, probably should be at least looked at. The good news is there's, there's time to look at that, because, again, this can't be approved on consent on Thursday anyway, and it's going to require two readings. So there's no rush in that respect. So we have a few days, you know, or several days to, to look into it. But I think that's something we need to get up to speed on. So in summary, you know, I want, I want the council to know and city staff to know, this has been certainly one of the most challenging projects that any city could undertake. There's a lot of decisions that were made very early in the process, going back to 2021, when the design was, contract was approved, to even going back many years before that, as Mr. Walker pointed out, and some decisions to defer a lot of the renovation services that could have been done in many, many years past. So all of us now are trying to make the best of a challenging situation. I don't think it's anyone's fault, but it is a challenging situation. So that, I'm happy to answer questions for my part, anyway.
Councilmember Manino?
Well, I'll, I'll say I appreciate the explanation, because I know for council, when we're given an agenda a week ahead and we look at, and we've seen it in the budget process, and we see a figure of 18, and then we see a figure of forty-three point five, you know, we right away step back like, whoa, what's going on here? Right? And rightfully so. But to explain a bit of a process on the escalating of costs that we're not seeing probably should be on here to give optics, not only for ourselves, but for our citizens that just jump on the agenda item or watch and see a figure of, you know, an $18 million deficit is kind of, kind of scary. So I, I appreciate you explaining that escalation of steps and where we go. For me, it, this, you obviously gave us a very thorough presentation, and that's appreciated. I think what you explained was a dilapidating Marina. Words like catastrophic at a point is, is kind, kind of scary. And we would all be in an agreement that our beach is a huge asset to our community, and that Marina should reflect that asset. So a project like this needs to continue to move forward in, in the right direction with the right steps. I think, you know, for us, seeing a number of $18 million in a deficit, I'm sure I can speak for my council member, causes us all hesitation. I do know you gave a figure of over $5 million in value engineering. That's, that's appreciated. I hope in that value engineering process, we're not losing the aesthetics, or the safety, or the longevity and, and life term of the importance of the Marina that will cost us in the backend. I think those are, those are important. I'd also throw out there, I know Mr. Assistant City Manager Slaughter's been heavy on this project. I know he's disappointed that he could not be a part of this, and that's just, you know, how life takes us sometimes. But I do know he's kept me up to date through the project, and he's greatly appreciated on Kokolakis and the group on your communication, your professionalism, your patience with us as a city navigating this process, as he said, but it's definitely needed. It's, you know, where that, that dollar amount is, how it's paid for, and when we can move forward. I also want to say, from the vendors and our commercial side of the Marina, they appreciate the two phases. I had a lot of them reach out and say, you shut our business down for a year and a half, we're in trouble. We don't know what we're going to do. So if it is just a million dollar cost extra to do it in the two phases, I know a lot of our, our commercial vessels down there for our tourist, tourism appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Anybody else? Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll speak to this, because $18 million deficit is definitely nothing to balk at, right? Just looking at the agenda item, it says approval loan of $18 million. Can we talk of where that money's coming from? The loan, how it'll be repaid? Those types of things, because I think that's something that's really needed.
Someone can answer that, it's coming up now.
Jay Ravens, Finance Director. Excuse me. What we were anticipating was a loan from the Capital Projects Fund. That basically is the fund that accounts for all governmental, non-enterprise capital projects. Those projects are typically advanced funded. That fund, over the last 20 years, has not had a balance below 34 million. So it's always got a decent amount of available cash. So using that to finance a loan like this makes sense versus going for, out for external financing and paying interest.
For sure. My follow-up question to that would be, how long is the term of the loan, then, to be repaid?
I think what we were throwing out was 10 to 20 years, based on a lot of things, what kind of grant money we might get, that tax money that might come in, whether that's truly 18 million or a lesser amount, and then also the profitability of the Marina once we get it back up and running. I would anticipate it getting paid off early, regardless of what term we used.
Okay. Yeah, because again, you know, I'm trying to look at the taxpayer's best interest, right? And $18 million, especially in this economy, is, is nothing to balk at, which I think is why we got to where we're at, too, with the inflation and the price of goods and services just going up. However, as we can see, we even have to switch it to a different process to let the public know, because it's such a large number. And infrastructure is definitely something that, you know, I ran on, I want to be here, I see the importance of it. I definitely see the importance of our Marina, especially being our Clearwater Beach Marina. It just begs the question, when we're in an $18 million hole, is there another solution that might have been better? Like a public, private partnership, selling Marina, letting a developer come in and redo it themselves, right? So I just want to not exhaust certain avenues. I'm glad we have more time to palette this, because, I'll be honest with you, even though I ran on infrastructure, $18 million is $18 million. So thank you for letting me know where the loan would be coming from in payment terms.
Okay. I'll weigh in last. Couple things. One slide that I know the vice mayor caught his eye, too, but it was on the temporary parking along the Causeway. That's, that's just on the east side of the small bridge there, that's that grassy area?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a proposal to pave that, or is it just going to stay?
It's, like, will be 57 stone, and then we'll have to return it. It'll be fenced, and there'll be MOT signage, and then we have to return it to what it looked like before.
It's, it's temporary, it won't be paved, there'll be 57 stone, there'll be fenced, and there'll be MOT signage. And we'll, I believe there's already some rolled curbs that we can use to go in and out, but it'll all be signed, and we're going to come up with a MOT plan for how it will work.
And you say after I've approved it, so I'm assuming it's not going to conflict with the resurfacing that they're doing on US 16, that they don't need to park their resurfacing vehicles there?
I don't think there'll be any conflict. FOT has approved this. We have the permit in hand, so they're well aware of exactly what we intend to do.
Well, that'll be helpful, because there's been a lot of concern among, particularly the commercial vessels there, and operators that, on parking.
So that, that, those 200 spaces will be used by construction workers and the commercial fleet, and others.
Okay. So that's helpful. The other thing I want to say, you know, I'm out there every day, and the Marina is a community jewel, a city jewel. It's, it's critically important to the success of our beach, our tourism industry. So many of our tourists that visit here, and we're adding all this hotel inventory, that they, they take an excursion, at least while, one, while they're here, on one of those vessels that works out of there. So it's critically important that we improve the Marina, and for obvious reasons, you've stated how certain aspects are, are very, you know, antiquated and deteriorating, so it's very important that we do this. And to councilmembers... And to councilmembers, Menino's point, very important that we spend the extra money to phase it in because we can't interrupt that business and, and cause injury to our businesses and things that support our tourism industry. We get a lot of comments, all of us about, you know, why you spending money out on the beach, X, Y, and Z. Well, those hotel properties, the, the value of those generates significant tax revenue for the city. So for me, yes, it's a lot of money, but it's an investment we have to make. So I think we can justify that. It does bother me, to the city attorney's point, and, and we talked about it, the city manager talked about it, you know, how do we get here? Because really, really, it's 48. We've rightsized it, we value engineered it down, but it's really 48 million, and we started at 18. And how we, as a city, kind of get there? And I, I understand inflation, and you showed the copper prices going up there and other.
We, you know, we're not going from a Cadillac Escalade down to a, I don't want to say Volkswagen, they make a good car now. It's more like a Cadillac, Cadillac Escalade going to GMC, what's it called? Denali, GMC Denali.
But, you know, regardless, you know, we had to get, we had to get approval for to do work in the waterway. You know, a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this particular project. But I agree and support reviewing this and how we got here because it puts a lot of pressure on our team to, to find the budget money to, to put onto this project. I will say this, though, I'm confident that, that we'll get, we'll get the 10 million from the TDC. I've already talked with them, city managers talked with them, I know Mr. Slaughter's talked with them, too. I'm confident that we will get that. And so that's a bulk of that 13, 14 million. But I hope we continue to push for more funding for this project from other sources. I'll certainly be out there advocating and trying to find support for it, too. I think it's there. I think we just need to be very strategic in how we go to pursue that. But that is, to Councilmember Cotton's point, extremely important that we get out there. Now that we know it's costing a whole lot more than we anticipated, we, we hustle to try to, to get more external funding, to take some of the load at least off our local taxpayers on those projects. So I guess, nobody else has anything to add? We're going to, you know, we don't have consent, so we'll put it as an agenda item for the upcoming. Anybody else? Everybody else they want to add? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If that's removed, item 10.1.
Award purchase orders to performance wraps and signage, sign age of Tampa Bay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director for the Parks and Recreation Department. The item you have before you is for sign replacement throughout our park system and throughout the city. We're awarding to multiple vendors. This way, we can have coverage on all of our sign options. We've got basically two types of signs. We've got all of our park signs, and we've got basically everything else, basic aluminum signs that may hang on a fence or on a post. So I've got a little presentation I'll give you. It's going to go through what we're proposing. As you'll see here on the front page, this is Delora Park. This is the proposed signs that we'll be replacing in all of our parks. This is the Delora ID sign that was done as part of the Delora project. This was sort of our test option for this. Why signage needs to be replaced? If you look at the photographs in here, these are some of our signs throughout our park system. I don't want to say that they've been neglected, but they've just not been a top priority, and we're trying to whittle down that list of things that we're working on. This has now risen to the top. So as you look, some of these signs, the materials were wood, they were foam, various things. The signs, we're going to come back, I'll get to a little deeper, but it'll be a lot more sustainably made sign, which will last longer, save us money. The process we went through, we, we took the signs that we had, we went and looked at what other cities were doing, because obviously we want to at least do as well as other city and municipal governments, if not a little bit better. We are Clearwater. And we, we went through, we developed a sign palette. Our public communications department picked icons that would go on these signs, and then we use city staff to evaluate those icons and essentially narrow down from 100 to the ones that we will be using. This is our standard sign package for parks. This can be replicated for other departments, but this is our color palette that's been determined. We just used it recently on the Rim Wilson Trail Bridge that's adjacent to Delora, so we're trying to bring everything into consistency. This is a general overview of what the signs would look like, map signs, informational We're reducing costs, like I said, by replacing signs as needed. We have an inventory, we know what's out there, and we know what needs to be replaced. We want to do that over multiple years. We're also going to go through and standardize our signs. That way, when we need to order, we can order 10 of the same rather than multiple different signs for different parks. And because of the way the signs are made, they are able to have two sides to them. So we have been doing some bilingual signs, where we have park rules, one side in English, the other in Spanish. And that way, we kill two birds with one stone, have one sign rather than multiple signs. These are some examples of the park ID signs that would be a part of this package. And you can see those icons, those are what was picked. You've got anything from the horse for the horse trail, we've got the Veterans Memorial, and here's even our icon off the beach walk sign that would go out on our beach signs. It benefits our residents because we don't always have staff in all the parks, so having educational, informational signs really allows our citizens to know what's going on, what's important, and, and sort of the benefits of our park system and the work we do. So that completes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, just real quick, are the, and I like the consistency throughout, and the communication in our parks is very important. Is the base of the majority of these signs pressure-treated lumber, or are we using a composite?
It's 100% aluminum. Weld aluminum. So one of the benefits to that-
A couple in the slideshow showed like pressure-treated lumber.
Well, what it is, is those legs are actually painted brown. So, well, the ones that are out there were not necessarily done by us, they've been done by different work groups. Like the one mangrove sign out at Cooper's, and that's part of this, will be to incorporate the aluminum legs on the signs. The one in Delora there looks brown like wood, but it's actually a painted aluminum. The nice thing about them, too, is if they're vandalized, it's a lot easier to reface that aluminum sign with new vinyl and paint versus with the wood or composite, if they would come out and vandalize it. Sometimes we'd have to just replace the whole sign, depending on the type of vandalism.
That's great.
Any other questions? Do we have consent?
Thanks.
Okay. We have consent on item 10.1. Item 10.2.
Approved increase to purchase order with CAA Icon for consulting services in connection with negotiations with the Philadelphia Phillies.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, our Cator, Parks and Recreation Director. The item before you today is a request to increase the purchase order with CAA Icon by $140,000 to allow the city to continue negotiations with the Philly, Philadelphia Phillies on a month-by-month basis. June, which we're in now, is the last month left in the current contract. If for some reason the negotiations and contracts are not completed within the next several months, additional funding may be required on this, to add to this contract. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the council? We have consent?
Yes.
We have consent on agenda item 10.2. Agenda item 10.3.
Otherwise guaranteed maximum price proposal to Keystone Excavators renovations and improvements at McKay Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Matthew Anderson, Assistant Recreation, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Sorry about that. So what you have before you is the improvements to McKay Park. It's one of our beach parks that has not had anything really done to it over the years. It was used as a staging area for the fire department, and we've got a great opportunity. Everybody, I think, has heard of pickleball, and to go out here and, and put in six new pickleball courts, new playgrounds, which y'all have already approved, stormwater improvements, new sidewalks, lights, landscape, irrigation, just basically overhaul this park and bring it up to the standard of what we like to offer to our residents. So this item here will allow us to do that. And it'll also bring back established, right now, pickleball is done on basketball courts and the tennis courts at CBRC, which can affect the availability for those courts for the sports that they were designed for. So this will, this will spread out our sports into designated areas. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Councilmember Cotton?
I feel like Director Cator's going to laugh at this, because I seem to be this questioning guy over here with this one. Does this have bathrooms?
It does not, sir.
Okay. Are we able, just between all of us here, why are we not upgrading our parks and adding bathrooms to it?
Well, I can tell you, this park particularly, we have the restrooms at the CBRC pool, which are relative walking distance.
Within its block, correct?
So that is the, one of the reasons, and also space out here. We have to make a lot of stormwater improvements for the impervious surface from the pickleball courts. And we really did not want to have to remove any more trees than we had to to build what we're building. That's really why we're only building six courts versus eight, because we just don't have the space with stormwater requirements. But I'll let Mr. Cator speak beyond that to other parks.
Yeah, sorry, I'm clearly turning into the bathroom guy when it comes to parks, so.
About the restrooms?
Yeah, why we're not adding those to our designs. Because I'll tell you right now, when I got my kids out there, even if I, you know, sold playing pickleball or whatnot, and they're doing the path, or on the park, you know, it's been an issue at times when there's no bathroom. So-
Restrooms are always an issue for us.
Oh, I believe it.
I've come up here so many times, and even in budget time, when we have asked previous council members to support funding additional, opening restrooms that we have closed right now. We have seven restrooms that are closed in our parks, they're not open because we can't maintain them. And we need to have personnel to do that, or contractors to do that. As far as this facility, you're right. When we worked with people, they wanted to have restrooms in this park. Everybody wants the restrooms open that we already have, and we can't even open those. But in this case, we actually have restrooms at the pool, we have restrooms at the rec center, we have restrooms across the street at Mandalay. So I tried to say to people, you have three restrooms within two blocks, and I'm, you know, I, I get it if you have a small child with a playground, and that's been one of our biggest complaints, but we, we just, we didn't need another $250,000 at least to get a restroom.
Is that what it is? The cost is roughly 250 to add a restroom?
That is, well, it actually cost us at Delora, what, 400?
Roughly 420,000 for a new restroom facility, but the 250,000, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the staff to maintain and keep the restrooms open, clean, and serviced.
Okay. And now, bringing up that point, the ones that are already closed because of lack of FTEs, is that, is that the reason why we don't have those open?
That is correct.
Full-time employees, for anybody watching that doesn't know what that means.
Yes.
And also, in the past, there's been safety issues, right? Unsupervised bathrooms.
Yeah, I understand that aspect of things. Yeah.
Actually, our pickleball people would have liked 12 courts out there if they could have gotten them, and then they fought for eight for a long time.
They probably would have wanted them stacked with lighting. That's what they probably would have wanted.
But it's, it is six courts, and we believe that's, that's a good balance, and, and it fits into the, the park. It allows for other park opportunities, you know, playgrounds. It allows still for some green spaces, you know, that are out there-
For sure.
-in that park atmosphere.
I guess I'll just take the, the badge, then. I'm the bathroom guy, so I would like to see bathrooms added. I think it's important. Not, obviously now, I mean, we can't do that, but get you some full-time employees to make sure we can get bathrooms added.
Councilmember Menino?
Yeah, I've, I've been reached out about two different, bathrooms was one of them, questions from families down there, so you don't have to be the sole bathroom guy. The other question I have is regarding lighting. I see on there it says, future lighting done. Is this solely lighting of pickleball courts? Is it the entirety of the park? And then are they on the normal city plan of timers and shut-off?
Correct. So currently, we have lighting for pedestrian walkways inside the park, and we're also laying the infrastructure to install the pickleball court lights. Because when we've got the park torn up, it's the best time to put in the conduit, the wire, all the pole boxes, handle. So that will go in, and then as funds allow, we will put in the pickleball lighting, and it will be on timers. I know we've got potentially some hour issues because of ordinance. We'll, we'll need to come back and change the park hours by ordinance, but yes, they will match with all the other courts and the way we operate them throughout the city.
Because I know neighborhoods get really excited when you put lights around athletic fields.
Exactly. The noise alone, but then the light coming in your living room, so.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have consent?
Yes.
We have consent on agenda item 10.3. Item 10.4.
Council staff has pulled this item.
Okay. Item 11.1.
Approved to vacate city right-of-way and alley as requested by adjoining parcel landowner
I'm coming. Chair was not as comfortable. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate. I have the next three items for you. The very first one will be the longest, unfortunate, but it'll be very thorough, and I will be as quickly as possible. Okay. The vacation request by First Baptist Church of Clearwater is actually a rather large vacation. There are many moving parts to it. What I like to do is just make an overall statement, then go back and address the pieces that we need to look at. You actually already have a summary of this, so you could follow through, if you will. This item is a request to vacate the adjoining city right-of-way and alley in support of the First Baptist Church of Clearwater, Calvary, in support of the continued sporting field development. I have some pictures to show you. The area that we're talking about is right here. It's going to be a rather large improvement. And this is the area we're speaking right here. It's a rather large parcel, many items, actually. That's going to be softball fields, they're going to have national competition there. It's going to be a great improvement to their facility and to the city of Clearwater with all that it brings. Okay, the first item to address is the vacation portion of this, which is really the meat potatoes. The vacation of this property is, I'd like to actually use this to show you. It will be vacating this entire portion with alleyway, continuing down to the last two parcels of land which they do not own. Okay? When you vacate right-of-way, the two adjoining parcel landowners split the right-of-way width. This is a 60-foot right-of-way, and because Calvary owns both portions of land adjoining it, they will have 60 feet of additional space to use within their development. When the plan was initially brought to, to us, a turnaround was requested. That was unexpected. The cost of the turnaround was substantial. The loss of buildable space that they planned for was substantial. And looking at that, I'm not an engineer, but I made a, a comment, why don't you just continue the right-of-way down and the turnaround? Because then no vehicles can come up the road, and that will end the turnaround aspect completely. They agreed, they amended their plans, now they do not have to amend anything else, there will be no cost for the turnaround. And what they're doing, in effect, is saving money, making this a very large, very sizable project. And when the project is completed, the right-of-way will be closed, there will be no more road through there. Okay? Initially, again, the road was never going to be there, it was all going to be fields, stands, and supporting features of that field. With the turnaround in place, that would have to be abandoned. The road would then be in place, there would be a turnaround designed. If a fire truck had to come into the field, whatever it may be, they had to have room to turn around. This negates that completely. But also, by doing that, by bringing the right-of-way down to the end of their own parcel, the last two homes on the very end of the road, they have access through the road, the street, they have access through their driveway. Therefore, there is no more need for the right-of-way or the need for the turnaround. There are utilities within this parcel, as- There are utilities within this parcel, as part of the condition for approval, they will be therefore under easement after. And the city staff has approved, reviewed and approved this item, any questions, please?
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Item 11.2?
Approved to vacate a five-foot portion of a 10-foot drainage utility easement by request of landowner Izine Jovan, located at 1317 Melonwood Avenue, I think it's Holvin, actually, I think it's.
Thank you, Russ. Okay, these next two will be far easier, they're very, not complicated at all. This is a vacation request of the rear west five-feet portion of a 10-foot northern platted drainage easement. What I mean by that is, we have a 10-foot easement in back, they only need five feet of it, we only have five foot left. Then we have two sections, we have an east and a west section, that's why they're detailed east or west five feet. We're only gonna be removing the west five-feet of the portion. Again, it's the home right here, the full 10-foot width, only vacating the portion of five feet. We did not want to release the full 10 feet, the landowner did not request that, therefore, that was not considered. But also, in, in saying that, we never want to release the utility easements. Once you give that up, and people build on that, you'll never get it back, so we have to maintain our easements. And there are no other utilities within that vacated area, city staff has reviewed and approved this, any questions, please?
Questions to the council on agenda item 11.2? None? Thank you, agenda item 11.3?
Approved to vacate a 10-foot utility easement by request of landowner Anne Marie Mayer at 1760 Catherine Drive.
The final one, thankfully, Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate. This easement vacation is required for the current landowner to keep their house current. And what I mean by that is, let me show you, if I may. When this parcel was platted back in 1970, you'll note that the different parcels are 65 feet, 65, 65. This individual purchased this property, at that time, they did a lot and a half, they increased it to 97.5 feet. That is the situation. What the plating would then occur, as you plat and you plot out the different aspects of utilities, the easement in question overlaps, they actually bought over the easement in place. Therefore, that easement needs to be vacated, so that they can have a clear title to the property. There are new utilities within that easement, any questions, please?
Any questions on agenda item 11.3? So none? Thank you.
Thank you.
11.4 is continued?
Yes, continued to date, uncertain, sir.
Item 12, city manager verbal reports?
Nothing to add, sir.
Item 13, city attorney verbal reports?
Nothing right now, Mayor.
Item 14.1, council discussion items, signed, Olivia Simpson, for instance. Just one picture.
Yes, thank you, so as a business owner, as well as a councilwoman, this has been an issue that's been brought to my attention, discussed consistently and persistently, and that is the signage. Whether it's the permitting process, the actual code itself, it's something that's always been brought to my attention. I'm in, I'm in two years, so I think it's time that we look at it. One of the things that, of course, I wanted to gauge your appetite on how to look at this, but I do think it's, I think it's time to address this consistent message that, from the business community, that the signage needs to be revamped, re- relooked at. At the very least, if and when we do that, if or when we do that, we have to include the very population that we're regulating, right? If we're going to determine subjectively what is aesthetically pleasing, what is not, I think the business community needs to have a voice in that. But there's, there's been different things that have come to my attention. There are those people who feel like the sandwich boards needs to be relooked at, even the permitting process, can it be every two years instead of one? Could it be automatically renewed, these are just like little things to make business owners' lives better, to promote businesses. And to convey that message that the city of Clearwater supports businesses, especially small businesses that are, that are the cornerstone of our nation and difficult to, to, to manage. Another couple of things is, we have this, we don't allow the artistic, I guess, picture or, or photograph of any type, or painting of any product that can, that can be sold by that business. So, for example, an aquarium cannot have a painting or photograph of a dolphin, or a wine bar cannot have grapes or a wine glass. I understand the need to, you know, have some kind of regulations to control the aesthetics, right? We don't want everybody to go hog wild. But I feel that, and many have conveyed to me as well, that we're trying to punish the whole class for the one or two problematic student, right? So, I guess at this point, I just want to have a robust conversation with you all, and gauge your interest in looking at this, again, looking at the signage and see if we can improve the process, or even relook at the codes with the business community involved.
Vice Mayor?
I know exactly what you're gonna say. We've talked about this for decades. Am I right?
Well, this is something we've been talking about for 20 years. And I, to tell you the truth, I was involved back in 2010 with the.
Task force.
Yeah, anyway. This has been a sore subject for a long time, but, however, Gina, when was it the last time we changed the sign code, the downtown sign code? Because I thought we fixed a lot of things on that one that really were annoying before. In fact, I was kind of complimentary the last time we changed it.
Gina Clayton, Planning and Development Director, it was probably about four years ago, and we made substantial changes in downtown, downtown gets more signs, pretty much than anybody in the city. We allow by right a lot of things, you know, multiple signs, it's all based on a hierarchy of sign to try to facilitate. You know, a good-looking downtown, I know you received some pictures from former Councilman Johnson the other day, and it was all the stuff that we allow.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, we did a big change.
We originally had 16% of the windows, we bumped it up to 25, that was the major big change, correct Gina?
No, that's.
Wasn't it 15 to 25?
No.
Percent?
We increased the amount of signage that you can have on your building, the number of signs you can have. But in downtown, because you're allowed all those other signs, window signage is at 10% for each window.
10%?
For each window, right.
We have, we have different sign codes on the beach, is?
No, no, beach, the rest of the city has the same sign regulations.
Okay, so it's, it is a different sign code for downtown than anywhere else?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor? No, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I want to step in front of, no, let you all.
Please do.
I was just gonna suggest maybe, one is, this is something you were working on 20 years ago, and it's something you'll be working on 20 years from now, along with improving the building permitting process. I think Dr. Zeus did something for a caricature for the city of San Diego back in 1956 on signs, so this is just kind of the nature of our business. But I'm wondering if it might be helpful to you, Gina, if we could kind of maybe walk through, and I know that we've got some pictorial examples and things in our, and, in the, in the office, that maybe kind of show them what the range and host of signage is that we can allow downtown, so they at least can see what we, what we will, are able to permit. It might be that they can, you know, we allow things to happen that you may not be aware of, simply because nobody's asking us to do it. You know, something got sick the other day to one or all of you about projection signs, well, we love projection signs. So if somebody walked in the door, want to do a nicely designed projection sign, we'd love to see those, those are beautiful in urban environments, so. Maybe one thing we might do, Gina, is just kind of walk them through what's allowed.
If council would like that, I'd be happy to do that.
And we can start there.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I, councilwoman, should I support you as well in this? I've had a lot of feedback, and not just from the downtown community and businesses, but throughout our community on our signage. And there is a balance, right, finding a balance between keeping it aesthetically pleasing and not, you know, looking like a yard sale or anything, but having the ability to attract business, to, to people to your business. I know I was at the aquarium this weekend, and I couldn't believe that they have trouble getting a sign on their building for people driving up and down the causeway, I guess they're limited on what they can do with that, so I 100% would entertain that further discussion on where we are as a city, and how we can be perceived as more business-friendly. And if it's only the education side of it, on what they can and can't do, that's a huge help versus shifting in policy. I'm 100% for that discussion.
Yeah, it's just, we joke about it, you know, we've always been talking about it, we've always been talking about it, and I, and I understand that, you know, it's easy to say, it's always been there, it's always going to be there, but to me, that's, that doesn't sit well. Like, there is a problem, and we need to fix it.
Well, sign codes are something that's never finished, is all what I'm saying.
I even think of enforcement as a problem. If we're, if we're on the dice and saying, let's put a, let's put a hold on it, let's revisit this and put a hold on enforcing, and then it gets enforced, that's something that shouldn't have happened, no?
The only thing that I was aware of was that, I think staff had addressed some, some feather signs, the feather signs we would enforce on. We've not been directed by the city council to suspend enforcement in downtown Clearwater, so without a collective action by the city council, we wouldn't do that. It would be our recommendation not to suspend all sign enforcement in downtown Clearwater, but if that was your desire, I mean, that's, you know, we'll follow that. But I think some things like full window covering, some of the feather signs, I mean, there's things like that probably that we have enforced on, I don't know how much we've had lately, I don't know if there've been very many. But we've been fairly easy and flexible on the sandwich board signs, because, you know, I think that's, you know, those are, I'm not sure why we need to permit those every single year, anyway, but that was the, that was what we were asked to do by city council at the time. Gina, maybe you can offer?
Um, I mean, we have dealt with the feather signs, they're stuck in planters in our right-of-way, they're prohibited signs. And then we did recently, I know, do some enforcement on window signage, because the entire window was covered with film that had signage on it that obstructed the entire window, so that I do know. I'm, you know, I don't know on other ones how much enforcement.
Some of my recollections incorrect, we did not have a discussion, they say they were gonna put on hold downtown signage enforcement just for a while. I, I could review the tapes, but I could have sworn we did, we made that decision to put a hold on it temporarily, the enforcement.
We discussed some, but I don't believe we had any, council didn't take a vote on suspending enforcement in downtown Clearwater. So staff.
I'm gonna review, just to clarify my, my memory.
Oh, you know, if, if I'm wrong, I stand corrected, but we would not recommend suspending all enforcement for downtown Clearwater. I think it's counterproductive, it's counterproductive from an aesthetic, urban design standpoint, and frankly, it's counterproductive from an economic development standpoint. And, you know, so I think most areas of the city, we would not recommend generally that you lower substantially your city sign standards. I mean, you have Gotham out of New York City, gonna spend 300 to 400 million dollars in a, you know, setting a new curve for the, you know, I think we want them to be constructing high-end apartments in environments that's conducive to the quality of development that we want to attract. So I think it's a, it's a balance, it's a legitimate issue, would never deny that, and it's, you know, kind of, maybe it sounds like making light of it that it's always an issue, but signage, the regulatory side of the house is always going to be subject to criticism, as, because that's just the nature of that side of the house. So it's always, you know, the burden will fall to each of us generationally to assess where the community is, what our priorities are, and those may change over time. So I don't want to suggest to you, it's not a healthy discussion, because it is, it's just, but it's one that, you know, that I think we just, when we come to a situation like this, I think it's best to, you know, make sure you all understand kind of where we are. We have a discussion about what, where we think there are changes that need to be made, and that we make them in a considered, a considered way, so that we can, and this is key, I think, is that we can fairly and equitably apply whatever regulatory environment you want to create across the community. I think that's, that last part's very important as well.
I just think that, and I, and Dunedin did it really well, when Dunedin's downtown was dead, they, they really took away all the restraints and made, and gave the merchants the flexibility to do what it took to make it successful. And then when they achieved that success, then they reined it in. And that's what I feel like, I feel like downtown right now is our, is a toddler who's learning how to walk. Finally, with, with, with the amphitheater, we actually see the numbers that we want to see on the, on the nights of the theater. But it's still a toddler learning how to walk, and we should be baby-proofing and removing all the obstacles, not put a hurdle over it. And I, and yes, you know what, Gotham is coming, but not for the next two years, so let's ensure that the businesses that are, that are being challenged, are, are, all the restraints are removed, at least. Because what I'm hearing is this message, constant message of, you know, we're trying to make it work, and we get dinged again. And I don't like that narrative, you know, it's already struggling downtown, we need to change that narrative. And if it means that we have to put a, you know, a hold on enforcement, within reason, I, I don't think that's too much to ask. That's my personal opinion.
Well, I would agree with you in some respects, that more so than code enforcement, parking has been a challenge for me, parking enforcement, because in my opinion, I hear stories from citizens telling me that our parking department's been really tough on people parking downtown, sometimes, which makes no sense to me, because we can't get people to come downtown, so why would we? And it's, I think your point is, you kind of got to read the room, if you're, whatever your enforcement responsibility is, parking, or code, or whatever. And right now, if you read the room, you're right, at the moment, we don't need to be overly tough on folks who are just trying to succeed and make things happen. So I would be for taking a look, I mean, we won't do anything today, but I think that's maybe the direction is to, for us to, to ask the staff to kind of help us take a look at it, and.
I think particularly, those of you that worked, don't have as much time, as much of that experience in reviewing the signs, it'd be very good to have discussion and show you all the things that, that we do allow and permit. I mean, most of all, all of our recent actions have either been to expand size, type, number, or design criteria, and in some cases, comp sign, I think, do we make those free? Comp sign, you can apply for them, I, it's, well, we, we removed them from a timeline issue, so you can apply for comp sign at any point.
Yeah, you can apply for comp sign, uh, comp sign program anytime, it's kind of always been that way, but what we did remove was the need for a comp sign program to have multiple signs in downtown. So that was a big change back a few years ago.
And I, and I understand, we don't want to lower our standards, for sure, I, completely.
But I think that's the important.
It's just, usually, you know, it's, I, I've used the, with parking, I've used the, you know, kind of the example of a law enforcement officer who, you know, gives you a warning and lets you go rather than write you a ticket, that that kind of customer service approach in some areas, I think would go a long way to. customer service approach in some areas, I think would go a long way to, um, you know, when, when things are tough for folks anyway, you know, to try not to discourage folks by the way we're enforcing it.
You want to hear the flip side of that?
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Flip side is, I've been on both sides of this, and I think back when I was on the downtown of Oland War, we asked that, and at the time, we had just completed Streetscape, and it was, we, we had the same argument, uh, let's, let's take parking free downtown. So what happened was, all the employees of the merchants that had stores down there parked in the parking spaces, and they didn't have any parking down there, because they would park in them all day. Now Emily's Restaurant, which you know, he had a hard time with, uh, people when they went to Park Mobile, because he has a lot of older people there and don't know how to do that. So at the time Jennings was manager, I asked him, can we, just around his restaurant, take parking requirements out for Tony? And they did that, and immediately the bill, the building, the SunTrust building, all their employees parked around his, and he didn't have any parking. He, he would go out and put signs on their window, please do not park here, they parked there all day. So there's, there are, there are arguments on both sides of that, I understand what you're saying, but it'd be good to hear what, uh, staff has to say about it, and so we can maybe look at it and make a decision.
Signage, uh, Gina, public planning and development can do, parking, of course, probably works, uh, but I can talk to Daniel, we'll, uh, we'll certainly have that. Whatever conversation you want to have about downtown, where we are, that'd be, uh, I think, no matter what, that's a healthy conversation to have, it's an important time to have it.
Sure. Okay. All right, any further direction? City manager?
So we'll make sure that we have an, an item to have a conversation about signs. Do you want us to also, is there consensus to have a conversation about not enforcing? Or pausing enforcement?
I, I, I just think if there'd be a conversation, I, I know, I know Mr. Slaughter had a conversation with the parking department about, um, using judgment with, with folks, recognizing that some folks are visiting here, spending a lot of money, and to be, you know, to use good judgment. And so I don't know about pausing enforcement, I don't necessarily agree with that, but see Mr. Delk's point in particular, uh, but I think if there could be a conversation with their staff about using good judgment, trying to work with people, I guess, you know, to the extent you can, um, not just going in and signing them, but having a conversation about, look, here's the code, not compliance, and I, I think that that's more of what I get, is that sometimes, and it's not all, we have some whatever enforcement officers who are really good, having a conversation with somebody. But then we do have others in different departments who, they don't have a conversation, they just come in and they give a citation, they walk out. And so, uh, a little bit of that, I think is helpful, and I know, I know it's hard, we, the city manager, I've been going around to departments and, you know, our call center, man, that's one of the toughest jobs probably in the entire city, you know, for utilities. You're talking with unhappy people almost every day about their bill or whatever. So I know that it's a difficult job, and I appreciate the difficulty of the job. That said, if we could coach our team to, for the time being, until we look at it, just to try to work with people.
Well, I think your point is well taken, there's an art to being successful on a regulatory side of what we do as a city. Uh, some people kind of just come with that talent naturally, others have to take a little longer to learn the art of how to, how to do difficult things. Uh, so your point is well taken there.
And we're only talking a few weeks till we can take a close look at it. In the meantime, not pausing, you know, just have that conversation with them, that we're looking at it, try to, try to work with folks in the time being.
Letting, letting y'all know, uh, bring y'all up on the even keel with what we do allow and how, you know, kind of how we do that, I think that'll be helpful for, for you, and I think it'll be helpful for us, frankly.
Yeah, I, I support Councilwoman to share on this, I agree, it shouldn't be discounted from a conversation, I think it should be part of the conversation, and I'm not saying, sit here and let's make a motion and pause enforcement, um, but to say we're not going to have a discussion about it, and the positives and the negatives in a different format than sitting here, I think is, is worth all of, value for all of us. Um, and I think at the end of the day, it kind of speaks to ensuring that we institute a, a culture of collaboration and cooperation, and not be a culture of no. It should never be no, it should be no but, and here's what you can do, and then that education process unfolds. I'm not saying that doesn't happen, I'm saying let's ensure that we are a city that does go that route, and it's not a no but, it's a no but, and here's how we can help you.
I have a question, council, do you want this item back on the agenda for Thursday, or the discussion to be scheduled at the next meeting?
I don't, I don't even want it for Thursday, and that's, we want-
I think Gina's gonna want more, more time to prepare, because we're gonna-
I just wanted that clarified.
Yeah, we don't want-
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna want to really walk you through that in a way that it's really kind of edifies for you what our sign code regulation means down here. I think that's, it's a very important area to apply it, and it's a, it's, uh, you know, so, give us a little bit, meeting, I'll, let me talk with Jennifer about, and staff, about what we can do from an agenda-wise, I'm gonna give Gina enough time to, to do it well, when we come back and take your time to, to walk through it.
Okay. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Okay. Next, a gen item, gen item fifteen, any new business items? I, I have one, okay? So, I want to talk about, uh, propose that we further modify the council rules, uh, particularly rule six G and rule fifteen. And a little bit of the history on that is, um, we, we've had a gentleman come out of there from the wet east coast of Florida now for a while, and, um, he describes himself as a YouTuber, and he's, uh, been to two or three council meetings since we came on board. The long history, the whole community knows, it's been reported in the media. Uh, he had, um, a lot of, you know, he had a, I would call it a battle with the prior council. And so I was hopeful that, you know, with a new council and a new mayor, we would just be able to ask him to respect his time at the podium, and to respect the other citizens here, to time the other citizens' resources, and to, uh, to make appropriate comments and to handle themselves appropriately, if he was going to participate in the meetings, particularly under the part of the meeting, which is citizens, uh, to be heard on items not on the agenda. Since the last meeting, he has taken to YouTube, and although he didn't really get any sensational video, we didn't have any adversarial conversation at the meeting, he's, uh, he's, he's gone on a tirade, uh, he's encouraged, um, his subscribers to reach out to us, uh, directly, and as council knows, the public doesn't know, many of them have. Um, and we've gotten some horrible borderline threatening, uh, communications from a number of folks who are his subscribers on YouTube. One that I received, uh, you know, refers to my mother's, uh, intimate anatomy, and then, and then, um, wishes that, or prays that, um, my children get stomach cancer so that my genes die. Uh, and I can read you a voicemail that we got left by, by somebody who claimed to be a Clearwater resident, uh, and I really can't read it to you because I'd have to bleep out a good ninety percent of it, you wouldn't know what they said by the time I get done. We've gotten all kinds, not just the council, we, city staff has been drawn into this, about their children dying. Uh, and we don't respond to any of that, we pass that on to law enforcement, uh, appropriate law enforcement, we pass it on to our local law enforcement. Uh, the email I referred to, and I got, uh, was traced back, and we trace them all back, even the phone calls, so you may think, nobody knows who you are, we find out who you are. Uh, the email I got came from Switzerland. So if it comes from outside of the United States, if somebody, and I don't decide whether you're breaking the law or you're not breaking the law, we just pass everything we get on to law enforcement, and, uh, we let them take care of it. But, uh, the, the volume, and, and this was clearly inspired by his last appearance here, and him inciting these people to lash out at us. And so we've also gotten other communication from a lot of Clearwater citizens who have said, why are we allowing this to happen? This person at the last meeting they were at said, you know, complained about having to drive four hours over here to speak at a council meeting, um, and, and took great pride in fact that he's a YouTuber, and he's making money off subscribers and advertisers for being here at the meeting. So, um, we got a lot of, a lot of, a lot, I'd say I got quite a bit of verbal, you know, concern from Clearwater citizens is, what, what's all this cost, costing our taxpayers? By the time we have to deal with all this stuff that comes in from people who don't even live here. And by the time he drags out a meeting, he disrupts the meeting and it, and it delays the, uh, participation of Clearwater citizens, people who live here and have other items, um, a lot of concern here locally about letting someone, two, one, come from well outside of Clearwater to disrupt our meetings, costing our taxpayers money. And two, uh, you know, making it harder for other voices of the people who live here to be heard. So, um, you know, we, we're doing, like I said, on the communications, reaching out to law enforcement, everything we get, we share with law enforcement so they can address it appropriately if it crosses the line. Certainly, everyone is free, Clearwater citizens, and put anyone on this dais, any works for, any one that works for city government, to let YouTube know how we feel about it, let the advertisers do, their pop-up ads come up on his channel, let them know about how we feel about it. Uh, and I'm not going to address any of that tonight. What I am here, or this afternoon, what I am here to address is this, is he has helped us in a way, because I have looked at the council rules again last night and today, looked at all the things that I see, what those rules are that allow me as chair to control the meeting, and that's, that's the point of this whole thing. This is a business meeting for the city of Clearwater. It's not, we're not limiting anybody's constitutional rights to go out there and do whatever they want to do on the internet, out in the public. We're running a business meeting, and we have a right as a council to control our business meeting, and to let, let folks come in and disrupt it. And the council rules, originally written in 1977, when there was no internet, there was no, all this electronic communication, a gazillion ways for citizens to be heard and make their, make their, you know. So those rules obviously have evolved since 1977. When we first put them together, um, I don't believe we anticipated that somebody would come in and hear from that far away, disrupting, controlling our meeting, costing the taxpayers money in the way they're conducting themselves. And he has put in a lot of evidence into the public record, as to he's, he's doing this for profit, for commercial purposes, that's not an appropriate use of your time in one of our meetings, and he's coming here from far away. So I would propose that at least for, talk to city attorney, and for agenda items, we have to let anyone from the public who wants to be heard, they have to talk to the agenda item, but for the part of our agenda that is citizens to be heard for items not on the agenda, I would propose that we amend our rules to limit it to Pinellas County residents. Not city Clearwater residents, but Pinellas County residents, um, who, you know, we may have folks in the county who don't technically live in Clearwater, may have an issue if they were on the agenda. That doesn't mean we can't, as a council, grant someone in, upon request, to speak during that period of time or somewhere else on the agenda. But I think it's, could be the tip of the iceberg, allowing somebody to come in and do this. If we don't change our rule now, we're, we're really inviting people from all over the country, not just the state of Florida, to come in and do what he's been doing now. So that's my proposal, is that we amend our council rules to, our meeting rules, to restrict public comment on items not on the agenda to Pinellas County residents.
Um, and I thank you for opening that door, I'll, I'll follow up. I have heard from a lot of our citizens as well, in fact, I've heard, um, multiple, just today alone, um, that have a fear of showing up to our city council on a Thursday, and I, I think that's, um, that's a horrible place to be. Uh, this is supposed to be a place with an open-door policy, where our resi, residents can come, be a part of their government, uh, and work with us transparently under the sunshine, collaboratively. Uh, and when they're fearful of that in our community, um, I, I think it's, it's worth, you know, looking at and finding ways, uh, to not only protect the business of our city, but to protect the residents. I, I would ask, um, I know you said Pinellas County residents, what about, uh, like, business owners or people that do business in the city, how does that affect this ordinance?
You, you can, I mean, we can grant whoever requests upon requests, so if there's, there's some issue that they want to speak about, but it would, I think, I think it's a starting place to restrict it. I mean, I would be okay with, you know, bringing it to the extent that Gina had said, but-
Yeah, um, so I'll speak to that as well, I, I don't disagree with that, I do think it's a disruption, I think that he alluded to that in the last meeting before he left, when, uh, just before he was leaving, he said, threw his hands up and said, fine, I'll continue to come back and make a mockery, is the quoted word for sure, of the, uh, this council. Um, I agree with Mr. Menino's assessment, I don't want to limit it to just residents, I'd like to be able to have businesses or vendors that do stuff inside here, to be able to say their piece if they have something or business that's being conducted within the city. Uh, however, you've already alluded to the fact of allowing them in with a special request if need be. So I don't know if that would be an additional form, that would need to be taken by the clerk to allow them to speak or to be brought to our attention, I don't know what that looks like, um, but I'm not opposed to it.
City attorney, you got anything to add on that, will you?
Well, uh, I guess just a couple things. Um, so from a constitutional standpoint, the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled that cities can implement geographic limitations on who comes in as citizens to be heard. That makes sense philosophically, because local government is here to serve local residents and local businesses and other local stakeholders. We're not here to deal with national issues, we're not even here to deal with state issues, as the council is aware. So in that respect, I'm fine with it from a First Amendment standpoint. However, a couple things to keep in mind, number one, as the mayor said, we are only talking about the citizens to be heard section. When it comes to agenda items, I do believe that under state law, there is a state statutory entitlement for all members of the public to be heard regarding agenda items specifically, and in my opinion, that would apply, including to non-residents. Um, so we are, again, only talking about the citizens to be heard section. The other point I would, uh, make, just as an observation, is that there is some practical side of the enforcement to this. So the question on, does the clerk, you know, manage this, and how do we implement that? So most of us think about showing residency through driver's license, but then what if someone doesn't have a driver's license, and they don't bring it with them, or they don't drive anymore? So should we have driver's license or utility bill, something like that? If the council wants, I could certainly, you know, bring back, you know, some ideas that kind of flesh that out, but there is a practical side of this, that it's probably going to have to be managed through the clerk or someone else, uh, in order to actually vet that when someone comes in, um, before they are able to be heard. And yes, there can be exceptions, and so if there's a borderline case, or one that the clerk is not sure of, or if someone is looking for special permission to address the council, uh, then there has to be some process by which that actually, you know, gets, gets evaluated. One option could be, if you'd like to start with something simple, uh, I could draft it to say any resident of either Pinellas County or a county that shares contiguous borders with Pinellas, that would include Pasco, where a lot of Clearwater gas customers are located, it would also include Hillsborough, um, which as we know, is a lot of our regional partners- It would also include Hillsborough, um, which as we know is a lot of our regional partners, and would even include Manatee, although less commonly. That would include pretty much the entire Gulf Coast. Very rarely do we have folks come in legitimately addressing local issues who are from that far away, outside of that broad geographic area. If I were to draft it as Pinellas County or any contiguous county, with the addition of the mayor being able to grant exceptions on a case-by-case basis for someone who has shown a particular issue of local concern, uh, that might be a good place to start. But again, there's, there's practical sides of this, and ultimately, either the clerk or someone else is going to have to either look at ID, utility bill, or something else in order to actually vet that.
An option to consider would be to require those individuals speaking under that item of the agenda to register prior, and that can be done online through the agenda, so that's something that's available to us. And we can close a limit or keep it, you know, open, that would be something for council to consider.
But, remember, we're, we're, right now, we're only talking about citizens to be heard.
Yeah, just, I can just do it just for that, for that item of the agenda.
I, I, I do know a number of communities that make you give advance notice, mayor intends to be...
So, we can do that.
Inside in, yeah.
That's an option, and it would still require them to identify their place of residency, so that, at least that way, if there is a question, I can confirm that with the county website.
And I agree with the contiguous county thing for the legislature.
Yeah, I agree.
I would definitely support that, and I, I do recognize what the practical part of it could be a little bit, you know, we're going to have to really think about, think it through, but I think it's, it's worth it. I mean, this is a city council meeting, it's, it's a business meeting, it's an agenda meeting, and having this free-for-all, I don't think is acceptable. And I've also received, um, communications from various citizens where they feel that they don't want to come, because they don't feel safe, they don't want to be part of the, of the, of the, of what's been going on, and I don't think it's fair to them. So, anyone who, uh, wants to discuss anything city, that is specific to the city of Clearwater, I'm more than willing to hear, but that's not what this is about, is it? So, I would support that, as long as it's not just residents, stakeholders, business owners, and with the neighboring counties.
Okay. So, direction is to city attorney to put together a draft of a rule?
Sounds like that's what I'm hearing. Um, so, with that direction from council, um, I'll plan to bring that back. Um, I think our next council meeting is July 15th, um, so I'll bring that back to the council at that time.
Okay. Okay. Any other new business? Um, closing comments by mayor, uh, just because we're long here, we won't go too long, but I, I, I did want to, um, to share that, and I'll share it again Thursday night, but this hurricane preparedness expo was just outstanding. I couldn't stay the entire time that I had a chance to get in the car line for sandbags and talk to some of the folks who were pulling up to, uh, and, and then the expo part with the booths that was there, it, it was so appreciated by our, our citizens, um, and appreciated by all our staff, uh, because, as I told the WFLA or one of the reporters that was there, it takes so much pressure off our, our leaders in our community, our first responders, when people are preparing. And for us to, um, to offer all the information that was offered in one spot, sandbags ahead of time before, you know, there's even a threat of a storm, it, it was just extremely successful. So, I know on our team, Javon Graham, uh, was one of the leaders to organize that and approached the county to put that together, and I'll certainly thank him again Thursday night personally, but, uh, you know, we do a lot of great events, and there were a lot over the weekend. Juneteenth celebrations were good, uh, at several places that I went to this past week, but that event really stood out. I mean, it really got a lot of attention and was deeply appreciated by our citizens. So, again, I'll comment more on it Thursday night, but, uh, just want to mention that again. Okay, with that, any other further business to come from the council? We will adjourn the work session of the Clearwater City Council.